Present.
Aye.
Sorry, I'm late always.
Yeah.
Um, councilmember Shemente?
Present.
Councilmember Rolio?
Present.
Vice Mayor Moncada and councilmember Scherrato are absent. And staff is present.
Thank you.
By the way, do you just do the flag of the United States of America? And to the Republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with every single justice.
Okay. Item four is report out of closed session. A direction was given to SAC. Item five is approval of the agenda as posted or amended.
Any changes?
No, no changes.
Okay. I make a motion to approve.
Let's go for public comment.
I'll be first.
Does anybody have any public comment on our agenda as posted? Or any reason to? Okay. Now I'm looking for the motion.
All right, so.
I have a motion.
I'll say it.
And a second, Rose.
Councilmember Shemente?
Aye.
Rolio?
Aye.
Herndon?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you. Item six is public comment. The public may address, sorry, the public may address council on any item of public interest, not otherwise on the agenda that is within this jurisdiction of the city. No action may be taken. Matters to be addressed may be referred to city staff or placed on subsequent meeting agendas. And then speakers will be limited to five minutes per person. Do we have any members of the public that would like to speak publicly tonight? Seeing none, anybody online, Rose?
No, he is for Habitat.
Okay. Okay, seeing none, we'll move off of public comment and on to item seven, which is our consent agenda. We have one item on consent. Um, well, any reason for anyone to pull that or discuss it for anything and any member of the public need to talk about our consent item? Seeing none.
I make a motion to approve. Second.
Shemente?
Aye.
Rolio?
Aye.
Herndon?
Aye.
Thank you.
Moving right along to our regular agenda, item eight. The first item up is our Habitat for Humanity. And we do have Morgan Gachi. Am I saying that right?
I did, yeah.
Thank you. Um, she's the executive director for Habitat and she's going to introduce herself tonight.
I am. I know you guys in other capacities, so I'm happy to introduce myself as Morgan Gachi with Habitat for Humanity Calaveras. I have been with them since January. And so, um, in case you haven't heard, we have something happening named just him. And, um, so we're pretty excited about that. I also have my esteemed colleague here, Hugh Walker. He's online. And he is our general contractor. Um, he was actually out on the property yesterday and was active with us and we met with some in the city yesterday. So, we're excited to see things moving forward. Um, I did want to give you, um, I wish I had more of an update, but that's okay, because I hope the next time you see me, we're popping a bottle of champagne and we have confetti and everything else. Um, as of right now, we are still waiting for the standard agreement from Calhoun's, which is our $10 million grant. So until we receive that, unfortunately, um, we're kind of holding our breath and waiting for any ground to be moved until we get that. So, um, we have poached the bear a little bit and gotten a response that probably within the next three weeks, we'll have the standard agreement. So that will change, um, quite a bit and things will happen fast at that point. So, um, we have a map in place, great call with, with Amy and Rebecca and others from the city yesterday, that we have a good plan moving forward and, um, know what is needed to do next steps. So, um, we will make sure that you guys know when we have the breaking ground ceremony, because of course we want you guys to participate enough. That's going to be a big deal for us. So, um, there's one other piece that I will share that has developed and that's recent, which is we are officially, um, opening up bidding for our vertical build. So anything ground up, we are doing and we are trying to encourage local contractors and suppliers to participate. So, um, very shortly, we will have that on social media and on our website too. We currently are reaching out to those who have already been in contact with us about participating and, um, Hugh has had a lot of conversations already to this point from local contractors, so, uh, we're excited to see what matriculates from that. So, um, that being said, we encourage anyone that is interested in bidding on it, um, to contact us at the office and we will provide next steps. So that is unfortunately the extent of my update right now, but.
Hey, that's something.
Yeah, it's something. It's going, it's moving. So, do you guys have any questions for myself or for Hugh?
So, I, I thought that the construction was going to be offsite and then we were going to bring the walls in and tilt the walls up. And so when you talk about soliciting contractors, is that just to, for the foundations and then help setting the panels that are coming in or?
If you don't mind the layperson's perspective, I will answer that. If you want a more, um, involved response, then Hugh would probably be a better person. The materials that we're using for the walls that you're probably thinking of, um, it's called CS2. And it's a fire resistant material that, um, we've worked with the city on before. We have a home built in, uh, Green Hill Creek currently that is made of that material. That is made, the walls will come in, but they still have to be erected. So there's still going to be framing in other pieces of the homes that have to be built. So, um, the truckloads will carry in those wall panels, but they still have to be pieced together and put up.
Yeah, perfect.
Okay.
I got one question. On the underground side, have you guys, um, sorry, have you awarded that contract to any contractor or is that out the bid also still?
Hugh, I'll let you respond to that.
Oops.
Hold on, Hugh. Okay. If we should. We still can't hear you, hold on. Right now, Hugh?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, we got you.
Okay. Um, yes, I went out two, uh, bid months ago, starting back in November, uh, to four different pretty sizable contractors, three local and, uh, one, uh, from out of the area. Uh, couple of ones denied bidding the project. Um, right now, I do have a letter of intent out to Moil Escavating out of, uh, Jamestown.
Yeah.
Uh, they've done a lot of work in Angels Camp. They built the tractor supply, uh, infrastructure project there. Um, I met with them on site yesterday for a couple hours. Uh, they, I've explored the project, other projects that they've done. They're very capable, very good guys. I really liked what I heard yesterday when I was talking to them. Uh, they will be doing the majority of the work. Uh, somebody else will be doing the PGE installation and a probably local John Allen Construction will be doing, uh, the retaining walls. And there's a lot of retaining walls on this project.
Thank you.
Sure.
And then I have one other question. I know, I think I've asked it before, but we weren't, we weren't here yet. What, how are you incentivizing local contractors to bid? I know you say you're incentivizing, but what does that look like in layman's terms? Are they given, I mean, how is it that they're given a leg up to, to be incentivized? Is it just an invite or is there extra points or extra gratitude to their, the weight of their bid? I'm asking.
Well, every, uh, everything with this project and Habitat being a nonprofit is, is about what are things costing? And there's a lot of work behind the scenes to try to get donations and work with some locals to see if they can, uh, participate in, um, affording to sell materials at a better price to Habitat, uh, things like that. There's not necessarily, the incentive kind of works the other way around. If you want to work on the job, you need to come in with a pretty good price and be able to work on the job or want to be able to work on the job as opposed to, you can't be 20 or 30% higher and expect to get the job because it's not going to work in the numbers. Um, the, the part where she, uh, Morgan's going to be putting up her social, on social and she has a flyer there that's going to be going out, um, is the fact that, that we're just, we're giving people an opportunity so that we don't miss them.
Yeah.
And we can talk to them. I get, I send out a request proposal letter, they get a scope of work. Um, and hopefully, um, if they've got the right amount of manpower and they can keep pace with three to five houses a month and they have all the right, uh, licensing and insurance, um, they'll be considered. And if it's closed, they, they'll be considered as opposed to somebody else. Does that make sense?
I'll add on to that too. Um, though Hugh is not from here locally, he has contacted me multiple times, asking me about, about local contractors and, um, has made an incredible allowance for, um, trying and attempting to work with local contractors as much as possible. So it has been communicated a lot and that definitely has its weight, but ultimately we are a nonprofit developer and we're raising the funds to build these houses, so it has to make economic sense for us too.
That's right. Makes sense.
Okay, I'd like to see if there's any public comment on this item. Do you have something?
Question? Um, I'm not sure if it's appropriate at this time. Are all the houses awarded out already?
No, no.
Um, I was wondering why Habitat hasn't considered with sweat equity, um, building a low income apartment complex. Doesn't have to be big, but the sweat equity is all the people that then are valid renters.
Yeah.
Into what they build. And I just kind of, it's needed. I'm trying to get out of, um, where I'm at and I can't find this thing. I can't find it in this county and 12. I can't find a thing.
Yeah. Yeah. I, well, I don't think there's anyone in here with, that would deny that housing is obviously huge issue. Huge issue in, not just in our state, but in our country. Um, I just got back from Atlanta and got to meet with my counterparts across the country and even the world. And it's, it's remarkable what is needed. Um, Habitat for Humanity's model has always been actually affordable housing through, um, ownership. And so it's, it's kind of been what that organization built on. Um, it's interesting that you mention that because there is starting to circulate some conversations about, you know, should Habitat get into the rental, into the rental world? I think we're a ways out from that, um, because it's just not in our blueprint. But that being said, we're huge advocates for whatever support we can give to other housing organizations that do provide that. Because there's no question, it absolutely is needed. So we need housing in all spectrum and same can be said for homeless housing too. We get asked that a lot and that's obviously a big concern for our state. Um, Habitat's blueprint, we, we can't solve all those problems, but what we hope to solve is those who can make the workforce housing that we're building, prevent them from getting to a place where they do find themselves homeless or they find themselves in a bad situation. So we're fitting one piece of the mold, but who knows? Maybe five years from now that could be.
Hopefully I'm not around and I'm dead by then.
No.
I can't take 20 left stairs, my son.
Morgan, even though we've got 65 single family homes that you're building, that Habitat's building, there are going to be 42 condominiums that are going to be built, um, about halfway through on the single family home zone construction. And those will be at a lower price point than single family homes.
They will, but they won't be rentals. So those, all of them will be soul friends, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Hugh.
Thank you. Thank you. It was very nice to meet you.
All right, thank you for coming. Thank you for the update. We always appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, no problem.
Thank you. All right, item B is our geodesic park update. Amy, obviously.
Mayor and councilmembers, yes, the GeoCon study is done. We did receive it and there were no surprises that we hadn't already reported. Um, we are trying to finalize the design location of everything. I think as of this morning during our meeting, I think we've pretty much nailed down where things are going to go. And now they're confirming that they can go there. Once that's done, we will then go to committee and have, get a stamp of approval on that and get a stamp of approval from you on that. And then, um, basically proceed forward with all the exterior design elevations and get those all approved by you. And then they will begin construction. Um, we are guessing because of that process that we're probably going to be a little bit closer to June. Um, and that's why we're allowing the parade, um, the youth parade to still use the facility to stay, um, in mid-May. So there's that. Also, um, many of you have seen some crosses suddenly appearing on various roadways. That is not graffiti. That is our survey. Um, it's an aerial survey. You'll be seeing a low flying plane also. Um, don't worry about that. Should have told the police department. Um, that's just part of our survey being done. That's pretty much where we are and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Let's go first.
Yeah, please.
Um, I guess, I guess I hold a little bit more frustration with this project than I've had before, Amy, and that is just because we've had a lot of meetings that had good intent and good purpose, but then to read that, that mobilization, the construction time is start till June, that's still three months away. So I don't understand the time lapse. I don't understand the reason for the delay. We do need to formalize and finalize the design, but that's where we were two, two weeks ago. That's where we were two months ago. Um, so I think we need to just get this fast track. I'm, I'm beyond frustrated with it. Um, I'm, I'm understanding that, yes, that the youth parade wanted to use the park and things like that. I'm also understanding that the park is in shambles because it should be a construction site, but it's not, but it is. So let's either get to work on it or let's open it back up, maintain it, mow it and show the pride and the respect in the park that we once had and we need to have.
Yeah.
Um, so that's where I'm at. Um, has the playground equipment been ordered?
Yes.
It says it's being ordered. Is it been ordered or not?
We signed the agreement to order it. Um, my understanding was it was ordered because today they came back and wanted to do a change on the design of the park, so.
Um, the park benches, we're reaching out to an alternative contractor.
We were able to go back to the original one. The wood has been sent to the mill and is being milled and then it will be assembled.
Good progress. Um, monuments. A potential, a potential funding source has been identified for rehabilitating the Mark Lane statue.
Don't move him. Don't move him.
Sorry.
Oh, no. I'll, I'll change myself.
The funding source that you're saying has been identified?
We will.
Back in the budget?
We will.
That you provided.
We, it's going to be what was budgeted and we will not need supplemental funding and we have identified the contractor and they are in the process of doing an agreement with the contractor for the restoration.
So the staff report?
That's new. That.
Okay.
Has happened since. That's staff report.
So how can we, how can we expedite this and, and get things moving sooner than June? Has a, has a notice to proceed been issued to the contractor?
So there isn't a notice to proceed. They basically resigned the contract and their, their holdup right now is coming up with the actual construction plans, which they were holding until the GeoCon study was done. So that is where we currently are. We are having the, um, site mowed, as I recall.
No, it's being mowed by members of the community.
Community.
It's not being mowed by the city or city staff. And I'm sorry, I'm not meaning to take this out on you, but once again, I'm frustrated.
Sure. And, um, city staff has been looking at somebody to do additional. And I, it's my understanding, we do have some volunteers who would like to supplement helping us get that moved.
So consistent with the contract that was executed a year ago with our contractor, it says that a notice to proceed is to be issued and the contractor is then to begin work within 10 days. And I'd like to know when that's happening.
Okay.
When is the notice to proceed being issued? Uh, Rebecca, are you the project manager on this or are we dealing with Amy on this?
She needs to talk.
Okay. So I think somebody needs to be accountable for the project contract with the contractor. And I'm willing to step in and see to it that that happens. So at the next meeting, two weeks from now, I'd like progress. I'm not waiting until June, I'm sorry.
But I think one of the holdups, Amy, has been that Boyer came back and wanted the GeoTech report before they chose to proceed. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So in order, in order to protect them and to protect the city, we entered into this GeoTech survey. That now has been completed.
Correct.
And part of it is, you know, I attended the last committee meeting, park committee meeting. The, the park horse stuff has been kind of delineated and what, what the committee saw fit.
Yes, um, the gym improvement is designed. The children's playground is designed and ordered. The park horse has been designed. We know what's going in it. Um, so those things have all been done. What hasn't been detailed designed is the pavilion, um, but they pretty much know what they're going to do with that and the stage. Um, they pretty much got the design set. Watching courts and the hard courts are no big deal, so.
So is, is a lot of the delay to start construction based on our time schedule, like for meetings and things like that? I mean, if, if we were to hold a special meeting?
It was the geotechnical report.
Okay, so now that's done?
Yes.
So, um, but then you have another meeting coming up on the 17th, correct?
Yes, we were going to discuss the interpretive signs there.
Okay. So is there, is there a way?
That is not holding up the project.
Okay, so it, but it's the council's approval of the final plans, correct?
The locations, yes.
Right.
Locations, but the problem is Boyer wouldn't even start surveying for grading. So they can't do a grading plan until the survey's done. They wouldn't do the survey until the geotechnical report came in. The geotechnical report didn't come in until.
The 32nd.
The 20th.
22nd.
Yeah, last week or the day after our last meeting.
Yeah.
Right, so.
So I, I guess, I guess what I'm asking is how can we help move this project forward? Would it better if we, if, could we meet sooner?
Mm-hmm.
Who approved the plans? I mean, so that maybe Boyer could start sooner? I'm just trying to help facilitate this discussion.
So what we are doing is the committee that we put together will have a special meeting the second I have plans in my hand for them to see. And if you would like a special meeting to them also, yes, we could certainly do that.
That would help.
That would help.
Addy a little bit, huh? Thank you.
But they still, but Boyer still will not proceed with any grading or any grading plan until the survey's done. And then the surveys.
The survey should be done in two weeks.
Okay.
Okay. So, but they're still doing design work while we're waiting for that to be done.
So the conversation that we had this morning was same thing, Jen. I expressed my frustration.
I know.
This is not, something has to happen. So if they have to break apart the project, break apart the project.
Exactly.
If you're going to start on the left, start on the left, start on the right, start on the middle, I don't really care, but something has to happen.
Let me start.
And do it in phases. So, um, if, if it's starting on the playground side first, then do that. If it's starting on the expansion side first, then do that. Their concern was, um, multiple mobilizations and I said, at this point, I don't think it matters, but there has to be progress regardless.
Perfect.
And if that's how it's going to happen and it's going to be done in phases, then that's how it's going to happen. Um, so I think I made it abundantly clear.
Yes, we do need to.
That, uh, something needed to happen. Um, so Jessie and Jeff, we're going to go back, have some internal conversations with plan and structure to try to figure out if there is a way they can carve out different elements of the project to just get something started sooner rather than later.
And once again, I'm going to point to the contract. I think that the contractor needs to come up with those ways. We just need to initiate a starting point and he needs to, we're not going to tell him the means or the method of how to perform the work. He's going to perform the work and provide us a schedule on demand. 10 days after a notice to proceed, he should start work, his days start ticking. Then we can have, uh, leverage.
You might want to bring up the additional issue that came up.
So we will be.
We don't want additional issues.
Do we want to talk about mine shafts or anything else?
No. The.
Anything else?
The.
Okay. Okay. So, um, while we're doing all this, um, two hawks have decided to nest.
Oh.
At the site. And there is a federal regulation that does not allow you to construct within 300 feet of the nest while they are there. Um, so we are monitoring them to make sure that they are in fact going to lay eggs and then that will put you 90 days.
Wow.
You can't get within 300 feet. Because they're close enough to the highway, we are going to California Department of Fish and Wildlife and asking for a reduction to 150 feet. What that means in practical terms is when they start, they may have to start on the expansion parcel first.
They get through.
How close are they to the river?
Excuse me?
Ma'am, ma'am, it's not public comment. I know, I'm sorry. I can tell you're very passionate about it as we are.
I've talked to moms that are totally.
Well, go ahead, Amy, I'm sorry.
Um, and that's it. And also we'll be talking to you at your next meeting about what to do with our mine shafts. We've got two options for that.
So I think what I'm hearing then is that if there's restrictions because of now some other elements, the birds, we have to, Boyer just needs to amortize the work on the.
Parade.
And then leave the park open for the, for the parade. We can, we can allow people to use the park at this time. We can get some maintenance going, some weeds, some mowing and get a portion of the park open until the window of opportunity opens.
Correct.
So I, I think that's the progress I'm looking for, at least with a plan, instead of just this kind of running around and excuses that have really been taking up more time than, and I understand that there's a reason for all of it. We don't think that it's, it's intentional, but it's, we just have to find a workaround.
And I think that it's been hard to get any, like, a, a solid, yeah, this morning was the first time we've been able to finally get a.
From the contractor.
From the contractor. And it was mainly land and structure to say, okay, here's, here's what our time it's going to be. Um, and there's areas that we can push. So for instance, once they submit the grading plan, you know, they have it in their head, there's going to be a delay on our side to get the grading plan reduced. It's our engineer.
They're still working with all the county and.
So as fast as we can push our engineer, it will get done. So we won't be the holdup in that. Um, and, you know, and then there's other elements that we can go ahead and move forward with. For instance, um, doing, uh, we talked about, there's the bulb that comes out, um, where bathrooms are.
Oh, yeah.
And it necks the road down right there. It makes it from a two lane to a.
Line of half.
One and one quarter lane. We talked, uh, early on, that should probably be removed for fire access and just flow traffic. So, um, we'll develop a plan. If, if, if nothing else, at least we can come in and do, uh, underground utility moves to get that, move the utilities out because we're going to have to touch them in time. Um, so there are things that we're trying to figure out what we can do to kind of get ahead. Um, but yeah, we can't control their grading or their schedule on their side. That's, that's.
Who is the construction? We don't have really an inspector or construction management team on this. Is that right?
So the inspectors with the CSG will, will be inspectors on.
It's not like we had to be ready to come in. Yes, okay. Ellen?
Um, so for me, I'm, I'm ready to see some progress in the whole nine yards, but I'm also going to be a little bit realistic about it too. And last year was a crazy astronomical storm that flowed through. This has been going on for me since, I don't know, a long time ago. Um, we did outreach, all sorts of stuff has been happening. So this has been going on for a long time. Um, I'm not trying to make excuses or anything, but things take time. And that's one of the biggest things that I've learned sitting on this, is things take a lot of dang time. The GeoTech is there to cover our butts and the contractor's butts. And we had to do it and it's part of the gig. Um, you know, the social media thing, which is, I think, where a lot of this stems from, I love it and I love the passion that people show about it. But I would love to see that passion also directed in other areas. Come help. Come, come do something, come. And I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to jump on that bandwagon. The farmer's market that moved from the, from the park to the museum was absolutely huge from what I heard out of people. It brought people to that museum and helped show it off. Now, Graham, is it a little downhill? It sure is. But I feel that it brought a whole new life to that museum. It showed people a different side of it. The Catholic Church was amazing letting us park. We had parking for days there. We even filled up those parking lots. So there's some good things that have come out of this too. And this, you know, and then forming committees can bog things down too. This board formed a committee. So you have to wait on those committees to meet. So I'm not blaming or pointing fingers at anybody, but there are some things that have held things up, but I'm excited for this to keep going. So I don't want to slow down. I think we're a month or so behind schedule, which in the scheme of things is not huge and horrible in my opinion. And don't get me wrong, I do love the, the way that people love that park, but there's other parks in the city too. Go to Gateway Park, go to Triumph Park. There are other places to go with your children and have fun. So that's my two cents. Thank you all.
I'm going to open up for public comment. I'm going to open up for public comment.
I'll take one, I want me to say one, I'll take.
Tried the gun club, they have a bird control program.
Bird control.
A bird control program.
Oh, bird.
Yeah. Any other public comment? Okay, seeing then, so, so I think we've all kind of set our piece. And I guess, I, I'm not a little unclear of what we're going to. Are we going to be able to open up some special meetings? Are we going to do anything in your, in your thought process here? Are you going to, is there anything you can do to try to fast track some things aside from what we're running on?
So basically, other than telling them, instead of waiting for them to make decisions on certain things, that's what we've been doing.
Right, but I, I think like.
And yes.
So therefore we can, we got to get some plans reviewed.
As soon as we have plans for you to see the site plan, we will have special meetings at both the committee and here in order to expedite.
Yeah, I'd love to see that sooner than later. And, and I know, I know Alvin just said that he thinks we're a month behind. I think we're three months behind. I thought we were going to break ground in March. So March became June. To me, that's three months.
I mean, very, very, I'm just saying very little construction projects open in February, March.
That was our, that was our schedule that was provided to us a couple of months ago. And I know rain happens.
That's what I'm saying. Geotech.
Geotech's up and going. We were the geotech, you now have a plan.
Two weeks. And, and my only concern, and I want to, I want to move this forward as fast as I can. My only concern with special meetings is you have twelve, thirteen. How many did we put on the committee?
There was thirteen on the committee, but not all of them show up at all the meetings.
Right.
The interest is.
Okay, so, yeah, just to try and get all those people together and all of us together for special meetings will be key.
Sounds good.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Can I just? I close public comment. I'm sorry, we're going to get going. We have item C.
Alvin, I'm going to talk to you.
Deal. I will talk to you later.
We have item C next, and that is to introduce, waive the first reading, hold a public hearing, and consider the adoption of ordinance five three nine eliminating chapter seventeen point three four and incorporating permitted and conditional uses for the business attraction and expansion zoning into seventeen point three seven business and attraction and expansion. And then amending seventeen point three seven zero eight O A two A to correct a typographical error to clarify that the barbed wire and razor wire shall not be visible from public right of way. Amy.
Mayor and council members are concurrently states that barbed wire and razor wire shall be visible from public rights away. We thought we should correct that so that people did not think that that was something we were encouraging as part of design review along the highway. In doing so, we didn't want to go through this whole process just to make that clarification. So we also picked up the fact that we have business attraction and expansion in two places in the code. We're putting them in one. And that's it. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
So I, I thought the barbed wire or razor wire was only regarding, you couldn't use that for a storage building, as a screen. Is that a different gen item? Maybe I'm just jumping ahead here or something.
No, that's, that's the item. So basically, it has to do with outdoor sales and storage. And we actually had this happen where there was some VA zone property right on the highway. And he came in and said, hey, you want to put up barbed wire and razor wire around the storage area? And we frantically went back and said, oh, no, you can't do that. About that, there was some type of. Because you do not encourage barbed wire and razor wire in view of highway forty nine along your entrance, exit areas. We were able to find another option for him, for security, for his fencing, that we wanted to clean this.
Okay, so along highway forty nine, if you're running cows along the highway, you still can put barbed wire.
We're talking like the concertina and razor wire and stuff like that. Yeah, 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 yeah. No, 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 no. This is not barbed wire. Or, okay, yes, correct. And you would have had to have been zone business attraction and expansion, which should not be in that.
Hey, okay, all right. So I thank you for that clarification.
And you're talking on the top like a chain link fence.
Yes.
Right?
Yes, he wanted to put razor wire.
Right, so what did you give him? That's my question is, what do you do as an option to detour? That, then, because that's, that's like the most common thing around is you throw a six foot chain link fence and throw the, the. You go out and the Constantine.
As a law, we have it, most of our VA requires a new site development permit. That is why we usually have the storage not right there on top of the highway. They usually let their store front there and try to put the storage to the back if they're going to have a security issue and require cameras.
On your, on your red lines, you say seventeen three seven uses subject to site plan review. That's been taken out, and now it is uses are subject to an A and P. An administrative use permit? So what's the cost difference for that from before to now? What is, what is an administrative use permit cost?
Uh, they're, depending upon the valuation of the project, they're either three hundred and thirty-two dollars if they're under ten thousand dollars or they're approximately a thousand. I can't remember the exact amount when they're over ten thousand dollars. Otherwise, they're in the three to five thousand dollar range if they're not administrative.
And before with the plan review process, the site, the site plan review process, it was more informal, right? It wasn't that type of cost, right?
Site plan reviews have already always been about the three thousand dollar range.
Yeah, yeah. I'm just wondering if it's kind of a lateral.
Conditional use permits have always been in the three thousand dollar range. We've only recently implemented this so that we can do some administrative.
I'm just wondering for impact on, on residents and their costs.
Yeah, the only thing, the only thing our changes have done has allowed an option to get a less extensive cost.
Okay.
No.
Okay, Amy, I want to open this, open this up to public comment. Anybody want to throw a comment on this item? So either kind of ask, make comments. Okay, seeing then, we'll be bringing this back and we are awaiting the first reading. And so we'll be coming back on this, right, Amy?
Yes, we just need to set.
Yeah, so introduce, open for public comment.
And set April the sixteenth as for the second reading.
Okay, so we're setting April sixteenth, twenty twenty-four for the second reading on this item.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. Moving right along.
We need a motion.
Oh, we do need a motion for that. Sorry, sorry, Alvin, do you ever get ready to say something?
Yep, I will make a motion. Second reading on April sixteen?
Yep.
Second.
Shemante?
Hi.
Brolio?
Hi.
Hernan?
Hi.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, now I can move on. This is to item D. This is approving of resolution twenty-four dash zero two eight, amending the general plan circulation element, reclassifying roadways to reflect updated traffic studies, and updating roadway classification system, and then updating the roadway list to eliminate roads that have been completed or renamed. Amy.
Mayor and council members, apologies for having this thick of a document for what is in fact a reclassification of our roadways. We have an old system of classification. Caltrans has a more modern system of classification. When they put out to bid, not put out to bid, when they have grant funding, they use their system of classification. And it has been hindering us to keep using our old system of classification. We want to be able to qualify for these funds that Caltrans has. Therefore, we are proposing the reclassification system that we have set forth here. Also, it used to be Angel Oaks and Greenhorn Creek. It's now Angel Oaks, Greenhorn Creek. We picked up that correction while we were at it. The last thing we did was at the very end, we were still using the two thousand and seven regional transportation plan. We substituted in the most recent regional transportation plan projects in Angels Camp in our appendix. And that's basically what this is about. And we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, so I, I appreciate this and, and I, I can support the reclassification. But I really think, as I heard a new term today, this requires kind of a deeper dive. As I, as I was trying to, you know, I kept increasing my screen size and seeing the streets and, you know, what's going on. I, I think, and I don't know how we prioritize in the past, but I really would like to see us prioritize some projects that, in my mind, have some fire and safety issues related. So I'd like us, Rebecca, maybe to, to look at this via study session. I don't, I know I'm Mr. Meeting here because I'm retired, but I would just love to have us look at some things, maybe take some things off the list, like that Dogtown extension. And I'm not sure we need that now with, with Francis, the roundabouts that are going in. I think that's going to mitigate some of that. And I'm concerned that for this side of the county, if there's a fire, there's no way to get through stealthy park and out, but there's a proposed, a couple of proposed roads. I see the same thing with Greenhorn going up to, you know, that Gold Cliff extension. I, I would just like us to talk about it as a council to see, you know, do we want to move some projects up and see them as a priority? Some of these, like the data showing, maybe not, aren't going to happen until twenty thirty or maybe never happen. But it would be good for us just to kind of get a handle on, on this. And I, I appreciated the work that went into this project. And, you know, it, it made me start to think about, you know, how are we going to protect our citizens? How are we going to move? What, what's the flow going to look like? And the second thing, Amy, it may not matter to anyone else, but when the planning commission approves a resolution, I would like to see how it was voted on.
Yes, this one was unanimous.
Okay, and maybe it said that there, but I, I would just like to see that. And, and whether or not the full planning commission was present or not. I mean, I, I don't know if that you have.
It was one absence.
Okay, okay. And maybe that doesn't matter, but it just is, yeah, my own edification.
And, and I will add, this was, we were trying to do a clerical cleanup as opposed to a deep dive on this. And we can do multiple changes to the circulation element. This isn't a one shot.
Right, right.
Thing, just to put that out there.
I, I'm okay with the terminology. I would just like us to, to kind of look at, you know, throw those maps up there and, and let's, let's really talk about what's needed, what's not needed, you know, what should become a priority.
Absolutely.
And I agree, I agree with everything you said. I was trying to blow up things up in, in my little screen in, in Zoom and I got, I got intrigued and I got down a rabbit hole and then I got frustrated. And I was, I understand the intent is, is terminology so you can go for more grants and so that everything's lining up and we're speaking the same language as our general plan and as the Caltrans language would, would deem. But I think when it comes to our roadway classification, that's fine with the roadway classification system, but when it comes to our circulation element, I would like to have a better understanding of what is in front of us.
And there is an option to approve a portion, but not all the proposed general plan amendment. You could just approve the language changes, reclassification, and not make any changes to, well, you would have to physically remove some at this point because this stuff is already in.
Part of it.
The general plan. We would have to physically go through it and remove things at this point.
To postpone it for another day where we can do that deep dive?
Um, it's probably going to take, that's going to take more budget and quite a bit more time to do a deep dive, to go through our entire circulation system and decide what we want to have stay there and not stay there. It was something we had hoped to do a large update on, a comprehensive update of this thing and, and look at all those details. Again, this was just supposed to be a clerical change. So in order to take things on and put them off, that's going to take a, a much deeper dive. We will try to incorporate some of that in our upcoming budget in order to take that kind of a deeper dive. Because it coordinates with so many things. There's so many moving parts when you move on things and et cetera.
Alvin?
Oh, so for, for me, I'm okay with the resolution twenty-four twenty-eight right now. And then, I mean, we just got done doing the emergency evacuation plan with COG and different things. And, and I'm, I'm all for looking at, I guess we'll call it emergency evacuation circulation plan. If you see, I think it's a great idea. I have no issue with it. But I think it's going to take a long time.
Oh, it's, it's going to.
And many, many meetings.
Yes.
And for now, just to get this clarification, I think I'm fine with. But I do like the idea of whether we put it on a future agenda item or we work it in with other agencies too. I mean.
We will need to have one of your special committees to start working through that. And it's going to take many months to work through the full circulation element. So we need to have like one of our technical committees.
Yeah, right. But you guys, I mean, weigh in what you want. That, that's kind of, that was, that's kind of my feeling on that.
I agree with Alvin. I don't want to hold up the process, especially if it means we won't get funding to move forward with some of the projects. I mean, so that makes the most sense to, to approve the resolution. And then just, and you've heard kind of our next.
Oh, yes, 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 I was, that's, it's a large, it's a big bite. And we do need to take that and fairly soon.
Yeah, and this is something that Amy and I have talked about at, at length in terms of.
Traffic general plan update.
General plan update, traffic circulation. There were a lot of moving parts. We were waiting to see what was going to happen with boundary lane. We were waiting to see, you know, what was going to happen with the shop projects. We were waiting to see what was happening with development and where that was going to happen. And that kind of then drives, you know, where your pain points are. We also needed to wait until the, you know, evacuation assessment report was done because then that also emphasizes those pain points as well. So it kind of helps tell that story. So there's been a lot of things that have gotten since this was, you know, kind of all these bits and pieces worked together. But that was something that we were going to focus on in this next fiscal year, knowing we're going to have to throw some budget at it.
Just so you know, it took five years to reduce the roof. So I would expect it to take a couple to revise, especially the circulation element because public interest in it is usually, that's one of the things that tend to get most public interest other than land use zone.
And we did, I did, when Amy and Ryan were talking about this, we were trying to figure out, you know, is this something that we could rely on COG? Because we're talking about kind of a local transportation.
Transportation.
Plan. And so I've been in conversation with COG, just kind of brainstorming if there's something that they could assist with on that.
I mean, and, and I agree, you know, on the agenda, if I don't say town hall, I mean, this, it's like, almost like the park. I mean, if people don't attend our meetings or listen to our meetings, they don't know what we're doing. And, you know, I appreciated the newsletter that kind of talked about the updates. And as we move forward with the circulation plan, you know, it might be good to hold some town hall meetings so people know that, you know, we're clearly looking at, you know, health and safety issues and future growth and, and all of that. I mean, there's, there's a lot of time that was put in this plan. And since that plan was implemented, there are some changes too. And, you know, I thought it'd just be easy and you just cross it off. It didn't sound like it's that easy just to cross.
I know, I was thinking you could just change the terminology, fluff it up a little bit. And it, it just seems the way that it is now, all packaged up, is not as efficient as we want it to be. So do we continue with this for your effort tonight and then just identify our, our, our deep dive?
That would be staff sort of the day.
Yeah, yeah.
That's for them. I'm going to open this up for public comment. If anybody had any, that's okay. We love to hear it.
That? Am I allowed to look at it and how do I get to see it?
Absolutely. So do we have it fully printed, the full packet?
We can print it.
We can print it for you? It was available on our website?
Not good.
It's okay. So we can, we can print it out for you at request. And it, it's not printed out here tonight, just the, the small.
I can go pick it up.
Absolutely.
And, and you're always welcome to come by the planning department. Sometimes that can be a little overwhelming as opposed to having.
I got lots of time to read and want, look.
Okay.
I'm, I'm better at that than computer and fast stuff.
Yeah, just come on in, we'll with you.
Any other public comment? Okay, seeing then, we do need to move forward with the resolution 24-28.
Someone, seconds.
Shemante.
Aye.
Brolio.
Aye.
Herndon.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, just one one. AMR, automated, automated meter reading projects.
Good evening, council. So AMR, give you a short description, what we're after here. AMR is automatic meter reading equipment. It's all automated. Right now, I have approved, on a good day, a full crew of six guys have to go out three days a month to read meters. And that's all they do for three days straight. It's very inefficient. Not only do it, does it take three days for them to get all the meters read? Then they have to go back out and do rereads and things like that. This system will cut that down maybe one or two guys in less than half the time. They'll be able to go out and just get it done. And I don't have a full crew out. You know, and and one of the problems being is when I have the whole crew out there and they have to stop to go take care of an emergency or whatever, then that puts them behind. That puts the office staff that's in trouble behind also. So it's not, you know, like I said, we can do this a lot more efficiently with AMR. And and that's basically what I'm after. And I'd like to move forward with that, with your permission.
So doing the math with six employees and I picked 25 bucks an hour. And if you look at the additional time that we go back out and I didn't do statutory benefits on top of that, and they're probably 25 to 30%, you come up to round numbers of about $60,000 a month that in labor that we're spending, if you add the 30%, that's $78,000. How much do these meters cost?
Uh, on average, I think they're, whatever we say today, I think it was like, no, it was, it was.
The meters, I think, are like 250, 300 plus, plus the, you know, if nothing goes wrong when you're swapping them out, you know, maybe.
So do you actually, you actually have to remove the old meter, Chris, to install the?
Well, that depends. Now, so we've been kind of working towards this for a while. We kind of anticipated that we were going to head this route. So about three, four years ago, Dave and I decided that it would be smart for us to start purchasing meters that are capable of attaching this.
Sure, sure.
So we we've already started with Badger meters and and we've been buying them for at least the last three years. And so as as Dave has had to go out and replace meters, he's been adding these Badger meters, which are adaptable to this system. So if I'm going to go out and change a meter out that's a completely different style or completely different brand, on average, it takes about 30 minutes to to pull a meter and then adopt a new meter.
Great. So I I want to, I want to clarify, it's not $60,000 a month. It's like $60,000 a year in labor.
Yeah.
And and, you know, and I appreciate Rebecca, everything you do to try to solicit grants and things like that. But when you look at other things that aren't being done, you know, the weed eating and all of that, it it's, it doesn't seem to be the best use of our people's time. And, you know, if we're looking at 2,000 meters, I'd like us maybe to move forward. And you probably don't have the person power to be politically correct to change out all of the meters. How long does it take to change 2,000 meters out, do you think?
Well, it's, I mean, like I said, an average of 30 minutes.
30 minutes.
It's gonna, it's gonna be a chunk of time.
And, you know, is that something that could be subbed out quicker?
Yeah, it would get done quicker if we summed it out. But I mean, we are, we are capable of doing it, you know, we just have to pick a section and move forward with it.
But then when you do that, nothing else gets done.
That you're you're correct. Something else has to get if we're.
I I don't know how the rest of the council members feel, but, you know, that that's just, you know, it's a huge chunk of their time. And when you look at, you know, they're going around and reading meters and that's about $60,000 a year. It, or, you know, it just seems like it it would almost be more cost efficient to move forward.
So so the idea with this is we have to put a system in no matter what. So it doesn't matter if you swap out 50 meters, 200 meters, 2,000 meters. You have to have a system. You don't get to buy one eighth of a system, of a software system.
Software system.
So the idea was, and and this, it is really hard to implement a system while you're trying to swap out all the meters and then, you know, so it's almost better to kind of cut your teeth on a beta project, get the system in place, and then it's just a swap out. And then if we happen to get any grant funding, then yeah, we go out to bid, they go for it. Or we come back and say, system works, everything's ready to go. We we staff know how to read everything. Staff have been trained on all of this. We've got the system in place. It builds correctly, reads everything correctly. And then, you know, why don't we go ahead and swap out, you know, bid out a third of them this next year? Or, you know, 50%, what whatever. And so we'll do one way or the other. It's either going to be a pay as we go and it's going to be up to council how quickly you want to get them done. Or if we are able to get some sort of a grant, which is the next item, then we would at least get through this so we have it set up. Because it it is, I think CCWD is still working.
Fighting with theirs.
Getting their system up. So it's hard to do a whole, a whole transition and a system update at the same time.
She is correct. Starting in a in a smaller area, just to get get the software, get the equipment in, get the training in, get everybody up to speed on it before we go out and do the whole system is a lot better. Just because if there are problems, it's a small area. And so, you know, we don't have, we're not trying to fight the whole system. We got a small area working the bugs out there, and then we move forward to do the rest of the system.
I would just, I I didn't mean we haven't do it yesterday, but I just think we need to develop a timeline.
Yeah.
You know, and, you know, how long are we going to test? And what are our next steps? There's, the enterprise fund is probably sitting on $2 million. I mean, there's money available if this thing works to help free up staff. I, you know, and and it just seems inadequate. You know, I watch these guys go around, you know, take two of them and, you know, or six or whatever employees. I just see the two in my neighborhood, but it just seems like, and then we get hit because nothing else is getting there.
Yeah.
And, you know, and I don't know, I mean, I I don't want to create a labor issue, but, you know, I'm wondering sometimes because of everything that you guys have on your plate and your short staff, is it better to maybe contract out? You know, and get some stuff done so that we can visibly, you know, see the fact that the creek has been weeded or this has been done or whatever. I mean, so it only took place today in the park. So then, when I came home, you guys had a sewer leak up by the depot. A water leak up by the depot, you know, and and we can't, and, you know, again, it appears as if we're doing nothing when, you know, if people understand that there's an inordinate amount of time that's happening here or you're responding to leaks, that's why stuff hasn't happened. So it would be better served to say, okay, to get us through this hump, this is how we're going to get over the hump.
And I think what is going to be whole is, I'm hoping by then, for the next meeting, because we did get the information back from the CIP from our engineer for water and wastewater, which is what we were waiting for. Because then you can holistically look at all of the projects that fall underwater. It's not a small amount.
No.
And this is, this is, you'll have to prioritize what what you want to spend those funds on. But this is a way to get it started in the right direction. And then, then it's a matter of, yeah, get, get, you know, contract out for them to just swap the meters out. We're trying to figure out, you know, do we, is there a, is there a route where there's a majority of Badger meters already in play and all they have to do is put the.
The component on it, yeah.
Whatever it's called on top of it, that would be ideal because then you'll see that that savings right away on that route and then keep, keep plugging away. But the other thing to think about is we really want to make sure we're doing outreach. Meters don't overread, meters always underread. So you will get a lot of complaints when these meters get swapped out because people's bills are going to go up.
So when a meter does go bad, they slow down, which means your your reading will be much lower. So when a meter fails, it's always in the customer's benefit.
So there there will need to be some pretty heavy outreach kind of on a rock by rock basis as well. But this is mainly, you know, this, this.
This is the system.
This is the system that we would like to go with. It's fully within my signing authority. But this would be us entering to an agreement with Badger, and that's the direction we're going to go. And we just wanted to to demonstrate, we, you know, staff looked at all this, they looked at other options. We've had conversations regarding the software, the training, the costs, kind of what we can maximize, it's already out there. And this looks like it's the best option. It works with our current utility billing system. It'll work with any other utility billing system. So, yeah, and then we also made sure when we spec'd out the tablets that staff were using for other purposes, that it would work with this reading system as well.
Chris, who else is using Badger? Any neighboring communities or counties or cities?
I I mean, I'm sure there are, and I know I've been told, but honestly, right now, I can't remember off the top of my head. But there's probably a lot of local agencies that use it.
And then do we know how anybody else integrated over to this system? Did they do it kind of cold turkey lump sum all at once or did they integrate over time?
Rebecca can speak to that, uh, CCWD.
Yeah, it, yeah. Well, but when we looked at it, it seemed it's, it's a, it's a mixed bag. It depended on the funding. So some would just kind of pay as you go. Some did, you know, just one lump and just tried to push it out and go for it. It just, it it depended.
My mind tells me that if we have some commitment, which we we budgeted $65,000 for this effort.
Yes.
So we have a budget, and we now have the selection that we're we're leaning towards. So if we kind of commit to this and then start pursuing grants, wouldn't we almost look more attractive for grants?
Yes, for sure.
So we're already got one foot in the door. I mean, we're just looking to get our meters out.
We're shovel, we're shovel.
We're shoveling. So that's kind of the other point of, like, if we can demonstrate, you know, we've got everything ready to go. All we're doing now is just trying to fund the the in-ground, you know. I guess a little ground, infrastructure, the relation of it, yeah.
For me, I'm all.
Yeah.
Sorry, this. I'm all for it. I think it's great. I don't know what's the easiest way to do it, like for us being down in copper, we kind of, it's not maybe the best thing, but we cherry pick the newer subdivisions out because that infrastructure is new. You're not dealing with old galvanized pipe that you crush. You know, I don't know, but maybe cherry pick like Country Lane Estates or Angel Oaks to test this in.
Yes, it'll be a smaller area.
Because when you touch things in older plants, it's.
Yeah, it breaks that.
And then just, you know, I think it's a great idea and contract it out might be another option too, just because of the manpower we have right now, like we talked about, is short on on that, on that wastewater. So I don't know, it may be worth it to contract it out and get this up and going if the funds are there. So there's my two cents.
Part of how we're going to choose the section is, you know, going by the replacements we've done in recent years. If we have, you know, if we've replaced a bunch with Badger meters in an area, that's probably the area we're going to choose because it's obviously going to cost less.
Right.
So.
And and I would imagine Rebecca, with the outreach, we also maybe can do some proration or something so that they don't get sticker shock. You know, we can help them with their water bills for a while until, if they see a dramatic change. Quick, my other question is, I've been approached by a couple of folks whose meters are not at their property, like off of Crystal. Is there, I I I know what the answer is going to be, but I have to ask, if we go through this and we install, can we install the meter closer to their house?
At a cost to the customer. Because the reason those have happened is because, you know, they they built on a piece of ground that a water line didn't serve.
Right.
So they had agreements or whatever to get a line to their property. But their, our responsibility ends at that meter.
At that meter, which could be 100 feet from the house.
Exactly.
And so could could we, it would be for the full, because you already have a meter. If, would it just be the cost of installing that new meter or it would be that meter fee, would it?
The problem with moving a line is, or like moving a meter, is now we take responsibility from where the old meter location was.
And why, you take.
I can't, I can't guarantee what the condition of that's in.
No, no.
So, you know, I I'm looking, I'm going to take responsibility for that. I'm going to replace the whole thing. And it's not going to be at our cost.
Right, okay. Okay.
Yeah. And then, and then in terms of time, so like, that's why I say best case scenario, like a half an hour. But then, like with CCWD, you go into an old subdivision and it it could be three hours.
Right.
I mean, just because galvanized, nothing, nothing goes right.
So like I was saying, you know, average is about 30 minutes, you know, talking today, today. You know, it depends on, you know, the the meter box. Some of them have what's called gopher plates in the bottom, some of them don't. You know, so if you have the gopher clutch, you gotta drill holes, you know. And then you you just get one that's in a bad location or, you know, the pipe doesn't come in quite right. That could take, you know, three hours.
So is it like a drive-by where you just hold your tablet up?
It was explained to me when we were looking into this is, you'll see dots on your tablet that go along with the road. And then as you drive, those dots disappear as as the meters, as the computer picks up the read. So it's kind of like Pac-Man. You drive around and wait till all the dots disappear and then it's done.
Yeah. And if, and the, based on the geography, you you could get in a place where you'd literally read.
Oh, a whole bunch.
Get high on the hill. You could get around the hill.
You'd fly a drone.
Yeah, where you could get, you can get.
And so after each meter is red, the red light goes off.
The dot disappears, correct.
Disappears.
Unless there's a problem, then it'll show up as a different color and that's telling you you need to go look at that meter. That's technology.
Public comment on his end. You're going to like this one. I commend you guys.
Honestly, I've talked to my meter reader, whoever, whoever comes around, and they're always polite, they're always nice. Even in rain, they're there when they're supposed to. They, there's a big boulder that a truck knocked down on top of the meter cement thing. And he had to move that, which it was big, before he could read it. But he was very nice, very polite, and they read it. Suburban propane, when they send their meter readers around, they guesstimate. And I wasn't home when I had surgery for close to a month. And when I got my next bill, it was higher than bills I'd ever had. And I called them, I'm like, what's, they're like, and they're like, well, she swears she read it. And I'm like, I wasn't home. And they didn't know what to do, but they said, well, it'll make up on the next one. Your next one's going to be real small. I'm like, you don't understand. I can't pay this big stuff out of my budget. So I commend you men. They're very polite, they're friendly, they do their job.
Well, thank you. I'll pass that along to them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Okay, um, so I think we've kind of given direction, right? Or pick a spot and let's go for it. I think, yeah, and I just want to speak to, I agree with Alvin. I think that if we can, if we can set, contract out a good chunk of it to free you guys up, maybe get the the newer subdivisions, two or three or four of them out of the way. And then we can do that cherry pick. Did you have something else, Mike?
No, I think also maybe Rebecca, you can work with Chris and and look whether or not we want to sell out some of the work that can't be done because we're short-staffed or whatever, so that we can start to.
And we've been having conversations about that. He's been on the phone helping people.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Chris. Moving on to, I am Pep. This is the approval of resolutions 24, 30, 31, 32, 33, and 34, which is designating the city administrator to submit designated grants for water-related projects. Rebecca.
So we're just casting a wide net.
Yeah.
There you are.
Because there is a bunch of grants, water-related grants, some are small. Some are for large projects, some have a 50% match, those would be kind of more on the smaller ones. And then there's the big guy, which is a 75% 25% now, 75% federal grant. There is a 75% cost, 25% match. And on that particular one, I would say that would align really well with the rest of the planning. Um, and on that particular one, I would say that would align really well with the rest of the planning. Um, design on the water treatment plant improvements. Um, cause we're, do you recall, we're thirty percent? Forty percent design, do you remember?
I think it was thirty.
Okay, so we would need to get beyond, yeah, that portion. So that might align really well with that, and it's not an exorbitant amount of money in order to get the design. We wouldn't want to do a construction project um with a only twenty-five percent funding, we would wanna do a plan A. So um, I'm gonna work with engineering to determine, you know, which ones of these would fit. With the projects that we already have, included in our C I P, that were already in the budget. But for instance, we lost all the funding for the water treatment improvement plant project.
But she's introducing legislation too, this new round, to help with rural.
Yep.
Water resource, so.
Yep.
Thank you for talking with her and moving that forward.
So we're 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 just kind of trying to hit it from all directions, you know, these kind of short, short turnaround. They open these up and then they, they're, then they're, they're sucked up, so. Um, we may, through conversations with engineering, they may say, hmm, this one's not worth it, but this one is. So I I'm not gonna say we're gonna submit an application for every single one of these. But if they align correctly, um, then we would go ahead and submit. Um, based on what's already included in the budget, um, it's just we lost funding for it. Um, and like the A M R project, uh, we got approval for the fiscal year twenty. Twenty-three, Water Smart Small Scale Water Efficiency Grant, well, now they've opened twenty-four and twenty-five. So it's just another, it's two more rounds, so um, we're just gonna try to hit it again. I still have not heard anything back from the twenty-three one, but we'll go ahead and try to go for the twenty-four one. Um, if we can get the twenty-five one, then we'll just, we'll just keep hitting them wherever we can. Um, but whatever we can uh get to maximize the the dollars and. Um, while, yes, we are sitting on money, there is absolutely not enough money to pay for all of the C I P that's in there. So anything that we can do to help um hedge the dollars that we have, use those for matches. Um, we'll also, um, as part of the rate study, which we're just, we were waiting on the C I P. Uh, portions of that to kind of wrap that up, and then the last piece will be uh the Utica um match. Or Utica contribution, um, then we'll start coming forward with having conversations with council about the rate study. But Incorporated in there is also trying to figure out how to maximize the dollars that are in there. For some projects that are very, very much needed, but are just too expensive. But maybe we could um utilize debt service. So we could hedge the dollars that we have, debt service those, it really helps kind of um mitigate those increases on rate tiers. So it's a combination between grants, debt service, you know, maximizing where we can. So this is just kind of a package, wide net, to try to figure out if there's anything that one of these will align with. But if I wait till we all figure this out, I'm gonna miss the deadline, so that's why it was kind of. Here you go, yeah.
I'm good, this is great for me.
Public comments.
Yeah, we're gonna open this up to public comment, and then we'll bring it back to council. Anybody? Did you have questions, comments, or questions?
Roll.
Let's do it, yeah.
I make the motion to approve resolution two-four, and then we go thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four.
I'm gonna second that one, Rebecca.
Thank you, Shemante, Rolu.
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item G, this is to approve the purchase order um to acquire a S seven-seventy T four. Bobcat Skid Loader, I'm sorry, Skid Steer Loader, with R M R A S V one funds to set aside for road repairs and crack sealing. Chris, you're up.
So I'm looking for approval to purchase a skid steer for materials handling or crack sealing and pavement management.
Okay, so um, I kind of Googled, that's a.
It's a machine, it's a big machine.
It's a big machine, and it's gonna come with a bucket, correct?
Yes.
And could it also be used at the wastewater plant?
No.
So only for crack sealing?
It can be used for pavement management and water system repairs, but not wastewater.
So you couldn't, couldn't use it to move the solid waste that you?
No, I already have a skid steer for that.
That's a little, yeah.
You can't cross-contaminate, right?
Can't cross-contaminate, definitely.
Okay.
I have equipment already for for wastewater-only purposes.
What equipment do we have that we've been using for road, not for?
We have a worn-out category backhoe that is on its lap legs.
Um, what attachments does this have for use out in the field?
As it sits, if it's coming, it will just be a bucket, but you could, the sky's the limit on attachments for this piece of equipment. That's why I'm choosing this piece of equipment.
Because I think then, as we have other, you know, needs for it. Then those funding sources can pay for whatever those attachments are or usage of it.
Correct.
Um, but the crack sealer ended up coming in substantially less than we thought it would cost. Um, so we still have the S V, you know, S V one funds there available. Um, to to finish off the year, so.
So I guess my other question, Chris, is what? What what does this open up for you? What does this allow your crew to start doing tomorrow out out on our roads?
It'll be for filling, you know, pretty much filling potholes, being able to maneuver material to the job site, you know. Instead of using a jet, you know, a big backhoe, especially on these smaller roads where, you know. This thing has a zero-turn radius, I can turn around right in its own shadow. Where if I have a backhoe, I may have to drive down the road to the next intersection to turn around and come back. And it 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 opens up a lot of possibilities.
You can do, and then how does it integrate with the crack seal machine? I don't know that.
It'll be for moving materials.
Different material to the machine.
Yeah, and then there's another thing that I'm looking at for this that I'm probably gonna ask to purchase right away, which is a sweeper. So I can run ahead and sweep, you know, sweep the roads, and the crack sealer can follow behind.
So then you can add a sweeper to this.
Yes.
You can add a a skids or a um, you can add a.
There's a lot of attachments.
Cold cleaner, you can, you can patch.
Yeah.
And then what about ditch work?
Yeah, grinder is another one that I'm definitely looking at, um, a grinder attachment for it would would be something.
And then what about, we have operators that are trained and ready to go, or is this new?
No, it's, it it, I I've trained on multiple, and and whatever shortcomings we have, I can, I can train.
And this was a recommendation, um, we talked to Erin, um, our civil engineer. And um, he's a former Public Works Director, and asking him to help us put together a. Um, kind of a comprehensive road maintenance program. And this, you know, we said, you know, what, what, what things should we continue to try to contract out? What things should we have kind of in our arsenal that that are things that makes sense for us to have? Um, and it was skid steer, crack sealer, those are things, micro-surfacing, just. Once you go through and all the roads are basically prepped through cleaning and crack sealing. Then you would bid out a, you know, a package of roads and then have that contracted out for any micro-surfacing.
It's a very versatile tool, it really is.
So the only question I have is, I'm assuming you'll use the trailer that you had for the backup to move this thing around?
No, we have a smaller trailer.
You have a small, okay. So you have a trailer for it? Uh, and then, yeah, I would recommend looking into the street sweeper. Uh, I mean, I know you can't, you're not supposed to have like erroneous dust now, you're not, it's.
The sweeper that comes with that isn't necessarily what I'd call a street sweeper.
No, it's not, I know, I know, it's not.
Right, it's just, it's a broom.
It's a broom that brought it.
Yeah, to the surface.
Yes, exactly, so, yeah, it's not.
Yeah, I don't wanna, I wanna make sure that doesn't get confused.
No, it's not gonna sub all the leaves up downtown.
Yeah, but it crafts the rest, you can be cracked.
It backs the roof.
Or when, or when you get, or you have open water lines and you gotta dig and you're. You're not supposed to hose the dirt anymore, there's all sorts of fun stuff.
Yes.
So this would be utilized in the break, the water breaks, the maintenance, for all those things, which we are having, have them.
We have them a lot.
And then we have to go back through and return.
Okay, public comment on this item. Let him have it.
And we have the phone.
Between the men and the boys is. Same, public comment. Um, bringing item F back, I'm sorry, G, on G, which is the uh. Acquisition of the of the skid steer.
Make the motion to approve the expenditure.
I'll second it.
Shemante?
Aye.
Rolu?
Aye.
Fernand?
Aye, thank you. Thank you. Okay, item H, this is discussion and direction. On City and Angels' Property Placement of Electric Vehicle Charging Installation, Rebecca.
Um, okay, so I brought this forward because I I don't wanna be the one to like. Single-handedly make this decision, so I wanted to get your input on it. Um, the the priority of the contractor or the county and the city was to look at. Uh, city or uh, public-owned properties, um, specifically that only. Would be open to the agency's fleet, which makes sense from the county's perspective. Because they have a much larger fleet than we do. Um, and they have a lot more space where they have their fleet parking that is restricted from the public. We're different in that we don't have a really huge fleet. We don't have, um, I think the first vehicle that's even on the schedule that would have to be replaced is like. Twenty twenty-seven?
So not this skid steer, huh?
No.
Hey, there you go. J J turns the first one off.
I'm sorry, and so, you know, and at the same time. When we look at all of our public properties, they're all kind of a public, public access. Public access, for public use. Um, and, you know, if Public Works is downtown, they can. Charge their fleet vehicle and happen to be down there doing maintenance, but, you know, we're trying to. I kind of looked at it and I and I had this conversation, and then the, and then the county started going, oh, well, that that actually makes sense. It might make more sense for us to do kind of a dual use. Where the infrastructure is available for both our access and public access. Public, meaning non uh, non-city uh fleet. And um, as opposed to trying to just put infrastructure in only for our fleet. Which is gonna be not utilized very much at all. Um, and then try to go out and find additional funding for. Public areas that are still our public property, but would be available open to the public. So um, I kind of looked at it and and we had the conversation that, you know, nobody in Frontier Energy then said, oh, yeah. I mean, that would make sense, but I wanna make sure that that's something that you all are interested in 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 doing. And so, you know, we, you know, we kind of looked at, well, maybe it's putting something at the museum. Um, putting something downtown in the Pickle Porch parking lot, or um, something down at Utica Park. And then um, what they had um, as as their options was the Angels' Firehouse. Which I don't foresee a fire vehicle getting, needing to. Anyway, and then um, and then City Hall, specifically behind behind the fence. So it wouldn't be available to anyone but the public, and that would just be PD. Because I don't have, like, City Hall employees don't have. Vehicles, and then, you know, maybe Public Works vehicles, but again, I don't. It's gonna be a few years before Public Works vehicle is going to be uh, one that would require a charging station. So I was just trying to figure out there, that it just didn't seem, it didn't make a ton of sense for us to focus on. One hundred percent only city fleet infrastructure for E V. Um, as opposed to finding something where we could both benefit from it.
So when you take it to the next level for public use, is it okay to charge for the charge? To charge for the electricity, or is it supposed to remain?
All of them now, um, I I haven't seen any where you can just pull up and charge for free, they're all for pay.
I don't know.
I, all I know is like the Tesla, when you plug in, it's, it, their credit card's on file, and it's.
You gotta, you gotta pay for it.
Right.
When, when charging stations originally came out, they're, they were, they were free.
Right.
In that whoever, you know, installed it, paid for the ele- the electricity, and then people would pull up and they would charge. And that changed after a few years, and then they added, then they added, uh, you know, where you'd have to put your credit card in there. So we'd have to work through that aspect of it, but, you know, I see it as an economic development, you know. Kind of option, um, cause we have no charging systems in the city. I think, I think um, uh, Roadmark has one.
Right.
And then, is it still here? Um, and then I think I might have seen one at Best Western, maybe?
Hmm, I don't know.
But that's it.
Yeah.
So you want us to potentially pick two locations tonight, and and you you arrive at two, is that what we're wanting?
Two, we have to arrive at two.
So my questions are, which has the highest traffic? Which, yeah, traffic area or, you know, number of vehicles, I mean, if we were to pick. I mean, the park seems like, when the park is up and running, it seems like, you know, an ideal place. Um, answer.
And I can argue fleet, so at some point, when Public Works does have a vehicle and is there, I mean, they're gonna have. They can charge while they're maintaining um, the property down there, or PD, you know, happens to have a vehicle and they go down there. You know, whatever, um, and then downtown at the Pickle Porch or, you know, if if we're able to um. Get that other property, that would be the other option. One of, one of those in that vicinity, that's where there's a ton of traffic, and again, Public Works is, you know, down there. Street, you know, sweeping the streets or, you know, doing maintenance down there, so. We can still argue that it is still kind of a central area for fleet vehicles, so does any need.
So how long does it take to charge?
We got airline here tonight, she can tell us all about it.
It depends, it depends on the type of charger. And so that's been kind of the other piece.
On this type of charger?
They're all different. They're, they're, they're just, they're all different. Um, and so that was part of the other thing is, well, which kind of vehicle are we gonna get? And then that would determine what type of charger we're gonna get, and I can't even find gas-powered vehicles, so I can't find electric vehicles. So really, what they do now is they make um, uh.
It's an adapter.
Adapters, and so it would, you know, finding, you know, finding the. You know, probably a a quicker charging option, um, that would be adaptable.
And then my last question, and I'm gonna look to Scott, who's gonna monitor whether or not that person's now, they've charged a vehicle, is using it as a parking spot? And not allowing, so who's, how are we gonna just?
Like, I know parking, just charge only type thing, yeah?
Yeah, I mean. I know it's the auto system, right?
The person that has a E V vehicle that can't get in there is gonna probably talk to someone who's parking there.
The only way we're gonna be on board is if you get by ordinance.
Yeah, I mean, I'm I'm just curious.
Yeah, they're not being ordinance acted about if you're parking a E V parking.
And not charged.
Right.
Just leave the car plugged in.
Big old diesel truck parked there with that corner.
The only thing I've seen on the charging thing is just like, up to eighty percent goes really quick, and this is the way I've seen it explained, it's like an empty parking lot, right? And the first cars that come in, they can find a parking spot really quick and really easy, and then once you start getting full, right? You gotta start driving around and finding a parking spot, so that's the way I've seen it explained, is it's like an empty parking lot, and up to eighty percent, it charges thirty minutes or something. Okay, really quick, and then after that, you have to go up and down the aisles to find where those, where it fits in, if that makes sense.
It does make sense.
So that was, that was, that was a real layman's turn to, I understood, I could be totally wrong, but that's the way I.
Yeah, because the way I look at it is, the more charging stations that we have, when people are waiting for their charge, they can be shopping or eating, and they can be spending money. But if they go catch a movie and their car's charged, it's now turned into a parking spot, right? Is that kind of what you're touching on?
Well, that's something I'm just thinking, I mean, especially if the parking is limited downtown, I mean, I. When I was on the planning commission, we talked a lot about this in terms of the greenhouse. when I was on the planning commission, we talked a lot about this in terms of the greenhouse gas and the fact that, you know, um, you know, it's gonna promote tourism and and things like that and, you know, it and whether or not, you know, we're gonna ask, you know, the the merchants or the local hotels and motels to install. And already, like you said, Best Western already has it. Only it makes sense because you're gonna see more of that traffic. I I just, I I I'm not sure if I support it or not support it. I think it's direction that we're going. I I just think that it's gonna, there's gonna be a learning curve once we install and
Yeah.
and and figure it all else. It's one of that grids gonna support it.
So this ZEPP plan was already adopted. And so it's, this is already, like, the the ZEPP plan was was already done and adopted. And then this is the second piece. So after that plan, then it's okay. Frontier Energy was ordered the contract to then identically basically do an assessment of fleet, of um placement and and all of that. And then they just need direction from us where where we want to stay. And so they're getting, the county gets two locations, we get two locations. But I didn't want to just say stick it, stick it behind City Hall and then and then stick it here because I don't see a lot of benefit to city fleet or to the public. So um these are all of the alternatives, the options and the alternatives of where they could go. Um, yeah.
For me, I'm going with the downtown parking, um only because that was already researched quite a bit and you'd have to pick Ms. Follendorf's brain, but that was a project she was working on and trying to review when I first got on here. And people really liked the idea, but we couldn't.
It was a look thing, wasn't it?
Yeah, well, there was a solar thing that that went away, but we couldn't get it to pay for itself. We couldn't. It would never recoup, but now times have changed. So I like the downtown parking. And for me, I like the old Napa property that that forces our hand on getting that kind of cleaned up and started um for. And it's right there next to the park. Um so, you know, Public Works guys can park right there and walk right across the street to the park. I think that's still a feasible thing to do. And when the guys are downtown, it works there too.
Downtown, you mean the Pickle Porch parking lot downtown or you mean that parking lot up on top, behind?
I have no idea. Whatever, I don't know where you can get power from. My thing is, I don't even know where you can get power and it's it's, I think it's three phase power. I don't know. It's big power. So part of it'll depend on where you can get power from. I know, and Napa has existing P G N E service there.
Right.
So that's a reason, that's another reason I picked the Napa idea. So I, there's a, there's a lot that goes into choosing the site, but for me, downtown and the old Napa property fit.
Those are the exact two locations I have. I like Napa because it's close to the park, but it's visible to the, you know, the drive bike. And it does kind of create a purpose for that location. Um downtown as well. My thought was though, and from what I remember, is when we kind of thought, or when I thought before, we have kind of a look in a in a historic appeal that we want to keep to downtown. So can we, can we modify these things to make them look historic or can we put it like, like put it, make it look like it's our house or something? You know, some sort of like a facade to so that it doesn't look like the Jetson spaceship just landed downtown. Do you know what I'm saying?
I know, I I remember that. So I think that was very was maybe a look because it was tucked behind.
Yeah, or to hide it in a way.
I can't remember.
You know, like there's those places that they have your propane tank and then the guy makes it look like a robber.
Yeah.
So can we do something, if we do select a downtown historic location, should we make it look historic, like a wild west?
And I I have no idea.
I know. Well, I don't think this contractor would be thinking that way. That was my thought, but the look of it downtown.
We can bring it up.
So the the grant or the contractor, the awarding to the city, to the county, that's gonna be turnkey, correct? Would be no cost out of pocket for the city to have these installed?
That's what we're still going through. So they're trying to, they're trying to figure out what's the best way to, they're they're collecting all of the data and then they're going to build a grant application based on that information and then submit it. So uh these are all gonna likely be competitive grants, but there's a lot of grant money out there right now for EV. So um we're not to that point yet. At this point, they're just trying to get us to prioritize the locations. And um we've already given them all of our fleet information. Um we've kind of redirected a few things, you know, for instance, like, let's not base the charging system off of the type of car we think we're gonna get five years from now. Um let's do it the other way. And so um we're we're not quite there yet, but I mean, if if there was gonna be any sort of cost, obviously, we have to come down here, have that conversation um to to figure out if we're gonna move forward or not move forward.
But it is all about our, is this, is the data that it was, not what we want for the public.
And then Rebecca, you may know this or could find out, are, is there some ongoing maintenance costs associated with these charging stations? That the district would have, and the district, that the city would have to assume?
Yep. It would be yours, yep.
I'm gonna open this up for fellow comment about charging patient.
Why? Seriously? I mean, this is gonna happen like soon. And the facade thing to try and camouflage it like Old Town if you put it down there so it fits in? You're gonna have people in the, okay, out of towners, say they couldn't find it. You hid it on us. It was under a rock. You didn't, you're gonna have to big sign it then. It's like, over here, people, and then read this sign when you're driving. You know, I mean, it's serious. There's gotta be a way then to locate it, to pinpoint it if you got your GPS or. I read paper maps. I don't do that. I don't do much tech stuff. Anyway, but, and I just, I, what's the rush? How many electric cars are there around? And then you said, and I do know that they all don't fit a certain, that every car can't plug into a station. So there's adapters. Does the city supply the adapter or the person has to come with the adapter for the charging station that's in the city? What do you do when they come and they go, I can't plug into your charging station. I thought you said you have a charging station here in this town. And now I can't plug in and my car's out of juice. I mean, there's just some things in my head I run through questions. Um, okay, I'm an pessimist at times, worst case scenario. I look at the stuff that can go wrong before it goes wrong. And those are the things I've thought of as I listen to you guys talk.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
I want to make a comment to, you're referring to practical ability for city staff. And you're talking about a downtown area and uh the old Napa building or whatever. We've got no purpose to be at the Napa building. Public Works isn't really gonna be at the Napa building. They may be at Utica Park working. You know, I I think Utica Park would be a better location for the person who's parking their car that could enjoy the park. Or, and then these things are mapped. So if I have an e-vehicle and I want to know where all the charging stations are, they're gonna come up on a map, they're gonna come up on my map and tell me where these, where these locations are at. So if I've got a, if I've got an electric vehicle, I know exactly where the chargers are located in any city, any jurisdiction. Um the other thing is, is for like, for public safety, law enforcement is starting to make the move in some agencies to e-vehicles. Now, I haven't checked on the success rates and how they're actually mobilizing and and working. But you're also talking about putting two of these that we're having to do in a very small area. And I can pretty much guarantee you the police department won't be using either one of those locations if we do have an e-vehicle. Uh because of just location. Um and and a suggestion would be to maybe move one of them and and I would throw out there that you use the police department parking lot as a potential location because people are also looking for secure locations to park their vehicle or whatever. Um as well, especially if it's in the middle of the night or or something. And that way, if, you know, once you get it using for practical ability, you know, for city, city workers um to be able to use that location as well, you know, currently, city crew parks all their vehicles at the police department. So um if they did move to a e-vehicle, at least there's gonna be a charging station where they store the vehicles and whatnot, it's gonna change in the near future at some point. So anyway, just something to to consider as far as my thoughts, as far as practical ability of of the actual units themselves and and locating them, where you're gonna, where you're gonna place them. And we're, you know, we're the police department, we're happy to have someone knocking on our door, say hello, we're charging our vehicle, um that kind of stuff as well, so. Um and then City Hall's right there if anybody has questions or or anything. So it's, it's not a bad location. Um either I know there's not much city property on the north end of town or the 4th or 49th corridor, but to put the two that we're gonna have in, within a quarter mile of each other and in the downtown area basically um may not be the the best, the best use of the two that we're gonna get.
Thank you.
We have one with business. I don't know. It's not that expensive. You can make money off of it and it's no smaller than any old telephone. Charging booth. Just a post for the, on it, depends on what size you want, how fast you want it charged. And um they're all, they all have their adapters with them or they're out of luck. It is your responsibility to get them. But I don't, I don't know. It sounds like you're making more out of something that isn't really there.
You have one at your house that you're able to charge at home?
I I got a motel up in Arnold when we got one.
Gotcha, gotcha.
And it's actually, we use it as a courtesy thing. I, we can, we have a way of making money. We just don't.
Yeah.
We just taking advantage that there's not any more up there or not that many. There's a number of them around the county in different places, in different homes and houses today.
I guess. But that gas station has a charging station, doesn't it, Arnold?
Yeah, the one up the.
Makes sense that gas stations are on it.
So maybe um an option would be probably not the property and and.
Yeah, I'm fine. I'm I'm fine with that. And that would leave, I mean, you're within walking distance and when Caltrans finishes the safe, safe streets, the um.
Complete streets.
Complete streets, thank you. You know, it'd be as a quickie walking downtown too, so I'm I'm perfectly fine with that.
And doing the park, you might want to put in a chaser pipe so you can, sometimes you want it relocated or something or set for it.
Are you guys thinking of those two?
I'm good with that.
I like, I like the Napa property because it is, it is close to everything. I mean, it makes sense that the only thing is we might be moving.
And and that's the tough part.
I know.
And that's where I really struggled because, you know, it it's, it's one of those number of people. So is it, you know, do we put it on old city, old property, right? And but.
But you're looking at the fire department being there in the future too. So as you're gonna be training classes, you could, how do people charge too? I I don't know.
But then that might just be the next phase, right? So this, this is, this is just to get us, this is just to get us on the road.
Yeah.
And then there will be additional opportunities, so.
I mean, maybe Middleton's will put some in. I have no idea. I'm just trying to think, you know, private or tractor supply down at that in your town or something.
If I was a private owner, I would consider.
I I think Travelodge has one.
Do they?
Maybe they do not. Yeah, either way, I'm yeah, I'm I'm fine with the police department and Napa too. I work for Spine River.
Oh, I'm good. I I think, you know, there are some benefits to having, you know, to the police department. At least they're not gonna use it as parking. You know, they're gonna charge. Um and I think something close to the park, be either at the park or at at the old Napa, I think would help facilitate folks that are, that are there, so.
Okay. Thank you. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're moving on to item I. This is now discretion or approval of resolution twenty four dash two nine for modification of the current City Hall building in a two hundred Monteverdi. And and a a budget adjustment. And Michelle's not here with us, so Rebecca?
Yeah, so I'll I'll take this one. So uh we have been as uh creative as possible in that building. Um but the reality is we're outgrowing it. And we know that, um and we should find out about the grant for the community resiliency the end of this month.
In month twenty four.
Yeah. Um and then we'll know, you know, whether to cry or hug each other. But um regardless, you know, we we know we have to do something. And we also know that there is definitely development happening. We know we're, you know, whether it's, whether it's additional, you know, contracted staff or or additional positions at City Hall, we're, we're full. And so um we just need to reconfigure the building to some degree. Um and uh and when we reconfigure, we also need to rewire the building, because that building wasn't wired when everyone moved over there, how it needed to be wired for technology. So we got a quote from uh Mobile Home Plus for about fifty thousand dollars and then Conith for rewiring is just under fifteen thousand for a total of just under sixty five thousand. Um but it would just make a better use and better um use of the real estate that's in that building. We've, we've, if you haven't been in there recently, I think we've done a pretty good job at moving people around and moving things around to maximize the space. But um, you know, we're, you know, constantly having people work out of the conference room that's in there. Um and then we don't have a conference room, uh we don't have a break area for staff. Um so that conference room is what it's used for it.
The biggest.
The server is a big issue. So we pay um non-compliant, PCI non-compliance um every single month because those servers are not secure. They're just sitting out and there they are. So um they really should be in a server closet. Um they should be secured. Um and so that would be a big goal of this as well. Um and that's it. Um but this would at least get us where we need to be so we can just be, have room for everyone and everything, um including, you know, kind of a little bit of growth that we're probably gonna see over the next few years um until we can read home.
And then what?
And then, in a perfect world, uh the 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 resiliency grant comes through. Then we're able to move forward um with those plans. We would be able to move forward with um the fire department doing plans for where PD is. Because PD would go join us over there, Public Works could then take over this building.
And this work would be done for Public Works. It would be, the server would already be moved.
Right, yep.
And the hot.
The offices built. Yep. And then they can use it for training. Anyone else could use it for training um in the office space, yeah.
So what's gonna happen with staff during construction?
It it won't really affect staff.
You guys are available in walls?
Uh, we're not moving walls. Um, well, we are, but it's gonna be done during a time when staff won't be affected, so.
You mean like evening and weekend?
Pretty much, or early mornings, late afternoons.
Mm-hmm.
And it's really those kind of internal walls that are not like grill walls. They're over by the conference room.
Right, right.
Right, it's a bathroom, pot water heater, kitchen area, right?
Yep.
So you guys would be on that side.
Yeah. Um and uh luckily, uh the twenty twenty two winter storm uh that uh halfway blew the roof off.
Yep.
Um that was uh partially covered by insurance and partially covered with um public assistance through FEMA. And um and the the siding was damaged and the the two sides pushed apart. So they came and re-banded the building, redid the roof, redid the siding. So this winter, we had no flooding.
Correct.
It was amazing.
Yeah. Did your window leak?
Nope.
So the window was really the roof. It wasn't your window.
It was the roof and the siding.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I I had, um, we didn't have water coming through ceilings, didn't have water coming through then. So we've, we've luckily been able to kind of shore all of that up. So um that that part's done. So now it's just some internal reconfiguration and then securing the servers. Yeah.
So Mike.
That's the huge.
Yes.
Here you go.
I think, I talked to Michelle about this and I think this plan also opened up at the entrance right there. So theoretically, if a if an applicant comes in, there's not just that little little turnaround. There's actually a area, I don't.
We're gonna expand that front shelf.
To where that little desk was.
Yeah, or they can.
Yeah, or they can just.
And it, cause that door doesn't always open and shut real well, they can get in out of the elements and get off the landing, and they have a place to stand if they're waiting in line.
Yeah, it 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 will be more conducive to customer service for them coming in and meeting with um, customers and applicants in there.
Spread out your plans and little elbow room.
You're right.
I was just asking, so um, so that will be your your new entryway, where the kitchen's at, you're gonna move the kitchen to a bathroom.
Still enter in, and it would just be this area right here, you know where Andrea and Casey sit? There's gonna be a wall that's gonna get put up right there, so that whole front area is gonna get changed.
Okay, so they're gonna be walled off, and then you're gonna have someone, another.
Casey will be up front, so.
That kitchen gets moved into the big.
And then we're doing a pretty significant scanning project right now, so we're going through all the file cabinets and getting everything scanned and electronically filed, um, so we can start eliminating excess amounts of file cabinets, and so between getting rid of those file cabinets and just being more efficient with the space, um, we're not having to grill out. We can just reconfigure internally and work with the space that we have, but just be more efficient.
Councilmember, commenting, and the other person's thumb. Hold on, so where, this money is coming from?
So this money would come from the general fund, part of the four million dollars that we're sitting on.
And timeline, like started right away, what's your?
Yeah, we hope to be done by June.
Like started this right away? Public comment, do we have any public comments?
Sound good to me.
Okay, seeing none, bring it back to council.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty four twenty nine.
Second.
Shemethi, Brolio, Herman. Thank you. Alright, that completes our regular agenda, we're gonna um, we're gonna need a quick break real quick, and then we'll come back for administration and council. I do need to take a minute, is that the twenty? Come back in and save five minutes. Eight o'clock on the dot, thank you. Thank you, thank you, okay, welcome back, uh, we are on item nine, which is administration report, Rebecca.
Okay, um, so we're, I I let all of you know this, but for the public to know as well. The abandoned vehicle abatement um, did not pass it with two thirds of voter approval. So it's gonna go back on the ballot in November, uh, we met just to talk about federal education, to learn what the program is. Um, and so we've got some strategies for pre-education, I think a lot of it is not everybody knows what abandoned vehicle abatement is. Um, and how beneficial it is to uh, the county and the city, so um, we're gonna be working on that. Um, uh, let's see, uh, Mark Gonzalez got firefighter of the year by Rotary, so that was very exciting, we're very proud of him for that. Um, I'm gonna be meeting um, on the eighth, so, what's that, next Monday? Yeah, okay, uh, to talk about fair booth coordination. Um, if I recall, you both said yes, just not Sundays.
Right, I am out on Sundays.
Yeah.
Unavailable all four days, I, I totally committed on.
So we're we're gonna talk about water, or we're just gonna be there to answer questions?
Just be there to man the booth for.
Person the booth, yes.
Yeah, person the booth.
Yes, I'm a good person to booth.
To man a woman the booth, yes, okay, perfect.
Friday, Saturday. I'm good, Friday's happy.
I can do a morning shift on one of the days, I have, I know I have Friday at Core Committee, and I have some scholarship interviews and things, I have so many things spread out through there, but I could do maybe a morning, I don't, it starts with the ten or noon?
Give me the slots and I'll fill my name on it.
Okay, so we're gonna be meeting on the eighth on that. Um, Jen, myself, W. Ponny and Lori are gonna be meeting to talk about DAC on the fifth. Uh, that's, that's great.
Destination Angels Camp.
Destination Angels Camp, sorry. The booster uh, request for proposals closes on Thursday. Sewer day, line replacement on Thursday, on the fourth, this Thursday. Uh, we got quite a bit of um.
Questions?
Questions and responses, uh, there was a full house for the um, the the prebid walk, so that was good.
Was that mandatory, or was just?
It was mandatory, good. Um, and then, uh. Um, no, I think, I think, I was off last week, um. I I had, I kept yelling no, and then I, uh, your, cause it it would call and then it would say, do you wanna answer? No, my poor husband thought I was yelling no, but I was just saying, no, I don't wanna answer. But uh, no, no, it was all good, and then uh, we met with Hoptat um, to kind of just go over where they're at, um, just kind of some finalizing different things with regards to storm drains uh, versus our water line um, alignment and discussion on their sewer infrastructure, water infrastructure kind of next steps, um, uh, grading, kind of ne- next, the next phase of that project. Which is gonna kind of do that dirt down infrastructure, um, so we we did go with that. I did get the, uh, I mentioned this, uh, the CIP updates, um, numbers from engineering with uh, kind of a by through ten year outlay uh, for these projects with narrative. So we'll be having that discussion with council very soon.
Alright, questions or comments on it?
If you need help with the booth, I'm already volunteering out there for some hours. If you have slots that are open, and I'm already there, I'll, I'm happy to help.
Okay, absolutely, wow, thank you for that offer, thank you.
Yeah, it's fine, I see your shirt, you're about the wild ride, they haven't had Mr. Fox.
I volunteered for that too.
Thank you, okay, we're gonna go on to item ten, which is council report, and Shemethi, we'll start with you.
Okay, I, I have a, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Um, I I like the fact that we're meeting tonight um, as a council, but tomorrow as a council of governments, it's called COG. And I have the agenda, and I I'd like to share the agenda to get some feedback, is, is that appropriate? Okay, good, and um, well, COG, council of governments is meeting tomorrow, and one of the items is, and Rebecca and Alvin probably can help me do this, is the Angels Creek Trail Project. The money has, it's loaned, but it's not loaned, but it's gonna transfer back to the county, so, and then those funds will be replaced. Um, you know, my my question is, and I I'm in support of it, and I'm sure the other council members are in support of that. Um, but should we be looking at other projects to throw on the hopper for the funding that could be coming up? So are we working with the county on identifying other projects that could be?
Yeah, so the next call for projects is gonna be in twenty twenty six?
Yeah, I think so, yeah.
Yeah, so we have to start working internally, and we're we're gonna start having those conversations with our um, engineer and uh, and public works and kind of brainstorming with COG in terms of what those different projects could could be that align with what we kind of already have. And also, those will be kind of discussions, you know, whether it's the circulation, you know, parts of the circulation which is part of the reason why we wanna make sure that we classify our roads appropriately so that they would align appropriately with those various types of funding.
Or we're giving funding for the downtown.
Downtown, uh.
Plant, what do you wanna call that?
Downtown uh, main street plan. And we also, you know, looking at, um, talking to COG about the um, the local traffic circulation plan. So there's, so there's, there's a, there's a lot of things, but we have some time because that call for projects, like true call for projects for that next round of funding isn't gonna come out until twenty twenty six. But we, we don't wait till twenty twenty six in order to make that happen, we have to actually start doing some of those plans now, so that we have that all available, so we can pluck from those plans and then move forward, but yes.
See, I did loan that out to StandCOG. And then we'll get it back, exactly, so, cause we didn't have the use for it at the moment.
So we, we thought we've done with environmental and done with cultural, and then we've needed right away already. And it's just not gone that way, so we did the exchange with um, I don't know if it's StandCOG or SafeCOG, I can't remember.
I can't, I thought it was StandCOG.
Sacramento, yeah.
Yeah, so we, we did that, and then it would come back for the twenty four, twenty five federal fiscal year for construction. And we thought, that's perfect, but plenty is not, it's not. And so, yeah, here we are, so luckily, the county needs the money because they're moving faster on one of their projects. Yeah, so they were thinking they might have to do an advance on CMA, and instead of advancing, they'll just take ours and we'll.
And cop my net, oh, that's beautiful, because otherwise we could have lost the funding to out of the area or to another.
Yeah, so we've been working behind the scenes to try to strategize how to do that. We had conversations with um, local assistants, um, with the attend, just to make sure everyone's on the same page. So, and we came together pretty well.
There's a lot of stuff that goes on in this.
This is gonna be your first COG meeting.
Yeah.
There's LTF funds, there's all sorts of this different funding revenues, and and there's, there's a, there's a lot that goes on.
And and I like the fact that our, our, the Calaveras Public Power Authority is gonna meet on the seventeenth of this month, and we're gonna meet on the sixteenth, I have the agenda. I like the ability to kind of talk with my peers and kind of get direction, so when I go and represent the city I I, you know, we already kind of know, and then we can come back and report how it occurred. I, you know, this, this, the this council of governments also had this wonderful I I don't know what I, I don't know, but I didn't know the history behind council of governments, I keep saying COG, that's what council of governments is.
I got it, once you said it, I can say COG again.
Okay, thank you. But, you know, I mean, I think it's, it's, it's a wonder, it's like LAPCO, it's a wonderful organization that, you know, and and we're a part of that, and and it just, the hardest thing for me is when I'm a sub or an alternate, is just trying to, you you can't get up to speed with it, I mean, you just can't. You know, um.
But I think anybody's touching on it, and I, and I do understand, sometimes, um, well, like with these subcommittees, we get the emails. We can at least read the agenda and see what other people are up against, and I don't know, that if you're not on the other board. You're not on COG, I'm not, I've never gotten an agenda, so maybe, Rose, would it be too much to ask for when those agendas are published to the committee members or the board members, can you provide it to all of them? Same thing with Judith and Water, so that if if he's not an alternate or not anywhere involved in it, he can at least see it. If he wants to pick up the phone and call me and say, hey Jen, tell me more about this item you're facing tomorrow night with with this.
Yeah, no, the.
At least it's gonna get you up to speed.
But it's a two-way street, it gets me up to speed and then it helps speed with your endeavor tomorrow.
But I'm willing to let our senior council member make your report. I said to Amanda, the senior council member.
No, 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 and and the only other thing I can say is like, it is crucial, like, I I've I've been on CPPA, so I know what that's kind of about. And if you can get on COG and all these different boards, I mean, the electric vehicle thing, we have to buy, it it's in there for for Calaveras Transit, and we're are you ready, we're gonna have to, well, we have, we have to buy buses. Yeah, I mean, we have to buy, for now, we have electric van that we just got, so we're having to go to that EV, so there's, and and it's been taking years, so I mean, you can get on, off, but you at least know some history and different things about it, so.
I I appreciate the opportunity, and you want, you can talk to me about the construction. No, no, I'm just saying.
Oh, I I got you.
Yeah, yeah, so I said, we reported, you can report, I mean, for sure. Yes, you do.
So, um, so for infrastructure, I think the main takeaway is it is absolutely wonderful going over what the city's up against with with smart water meters and and parking spots and all all sorts of stuff. Um, but between me and you and everything else right now, I think my opinion is, and and in years too, was we need to do this quarter. If if that works, there's just, there's so much crucial information that I have, I forgot about or I wasn't given. And not to say that everybody needs every piece of information, but the stuff you presented is like gold, kind of, you know what I mean, and not to say that I can't talk or communicate, but it's kind of lost. So I I would love to see this infrastructure facilities move to a quarterly update, and and instead of a closed session we have, we have an hour long.
Like a quarterly to full council?
Quarterly to full council, I think would be absolutely wonderful, and it is, rather than a than a closed session, we would have I don't care if it's at the start of the quarter or whenever, middle or wherever we can pick.
And it's kind of interesting because we'll all be talking about a particular issue. And, you know, we'll be brainstorming, and then you're going through like files and drawers, and then go reading through, you know, an old employee's emails that we still retained, and then going through an old employee's like computer, cause they didn't save anything on the network, it was all on their computer, so, and you'll go, oh my gosh. It's exactly what we were talking about, but they had this conversation ten years ago. Um, so it, we're pulling all these pieces back together to just try to formulate we're trying not to reinvent the wheel, and we know we're on the right track because it was already talked about ten years ago. And it was already talked about ten years before that.
Right, and that's like even the parking up on, you know, above Raspberry and above all those businesses, I didn't know, I thought it was all ours, and it's not, you know what I mean, so there's. There's some. There's, there's a whole bunch of.
I'll send you that one, well, no, you got it, it's it's interesting information, it's so.
And 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 I I think, I honestly think we all kind of need to be on that, on that, um, if that makes sense.
Nope, that works.
Do you want to report anything else, I don't know, or would you like to do it senior, senior?
Senior, junior.
I, you know, and I think it was the same, and and I know that Jen's gonna talk about the finance. You know, I I was a guest and I sat there quietly until it was my turn to speak as a public.
I I offered him public comment, as a member of the public, every time, Mr. QC Public, I called him.
But I just, you know, I I, you know, I I, and I think we talked about it, I I wanna, we need to be appreciative of of staff time. And it feels like, you know, what staff was gonna do is prepare for that meeting and then come back to the full council. And, you know, I really think if there were any questions that were gonna be asked, then staff could get back to us with an answer next meeting or something. I, and I I like the idea of quarterly, uh, but I, you know, I mean, part of me uh, can understand because some questions are coming up, and and I think your intent was, let's, let's, let's ask those questions and come back. But then it delves into a, and it's not gonna slow down the amount of conversation we're gonna have. Um, and I I agree, I wouldn't mind spending, starting at five, and you know, looking at it, or five, whatever.
Okay, we can do four, I mean, if it, if it's big enough to warrant, we can go, I mean, we don't close it out, but we can even go earlier once at every, so often, I I can get out of work earlier, and I'm assuming you maybe could, and I don't know.
No, with advanced notice, I can, and I should, and if it's productive, like we said the other day. We just.
If that makes.
I agree, I'm I'm good with that.
And then I'll keep, no, I have nothing else, I have no other council reports passed out, I had nobody.
Ask a question?
What do you got?
So you mentioned the infrastructure one, is this gonna be the same for the finance?
I I think it should be reasonable, I think it's fair that they're just as curious as what's going on and just as worthy of getting those updates.
Well, in finance is a little.
We haven't had.
Uh, and because like we do do mid-year and so, you know, we, I, I think those, those, and I'm gonna work with Michelle, but I think that those we should bring back to a quarterly basis.
Okay.
Um, cause when I first started, because you guys were really in the dark, I think I was coming monthly to give you updates. And then we moved it to quarterly. Um, so now we just went mid-year and then end of year. But it might be helpful, um, to, to go back to that quarterly, um, option. And then kind of do a, a longer deep dive in terms of where we're at and trends.
Okay.
That'd be fine.
So for me on the, uh, I don't know, I don't mind so much financial as it is the budgetary side.
Yeah.
It was much easier when I sat and we, we, we met in pairs, like we would go in and he met with John and Scott. And I knew that this was, this is an amount of money we had to spend. These are the list of projects they wanted and we kind of batted them around and moved them and prioritized and then we came up with a good plan. And then I could tell people that we didn't get the police car this year because we really needed new radios, cause they didn't even operate. You know, or I had, I had some knowledge of why they didn't get this and they did get that. Um, that for me is kind of, I like it a lot and I don't maybe need to be there at that meeting. But I would love to know, hey, this was the money we had to spend. You know, these got pushed to the side because we don't, we're waiting for grant funding or something different. I, rather than just here's the budget and this is what we got. I would love to know maybe what projects, the narrative of how you ended up there. And I don't know the right way or wrong way to do that. We can take the next couple of years to figure it all out. Um, but yeah, some sort of a narrative on how we ended up at this budget with, you know, we didn't get a skid steer last year, or we did get a skid steer, or whatever we want to look at.
And I think the difference probably this year that we're in, we didn't say no to much bank.
No, I know. You're freaking me out still.
Wait till we close the book.
I know. I, I have full trust. I'm just.
We, we didn't say no, no to a lot. And anything that we did, it was just, it was based on bandwidth. So it, I mean, that's all of it.
We just can't handle it. Not that we didn't have the money.
Right.
We just can't handle it.
Correct.
Right.
Um, where I think in prior years, doesn't only go back through those budgets, it's, it, they're lined out.
There was.
There was asks and no gives, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, there was.
And I remember that. I think year one was.
Yeah.
Kind of that, this is what they're asking for and we kind of have to just push all of, off to the side and it was just the basic, whatever it was.
Yeah, and then, and then it was, we had a whole spin around and one eighty and all sorts of stuff. We're trying to regroup and I think we're regrouped and I think we're on a really good path. I'm just kind of poking out some things that, and however I get there, I don't, I, I can have a one-on-one with you. Or we want to do an open session, but that, for me, I just, I like knowing a little more
Yeah.
um, of some of the choices. And however we get there, for me, that, that, it doesn't have to be a whole group. That, that's, that's my opinion on it.
Two at a time.
Something like that. So.
Um, okay. Well, my report, uh, at the subcommittee, at the finance subcommittee, um, Michelle, we did a, a, I'm gonna say deep dive again. We did a deep dive on measure A, um, with the next steps and the implementation. Um, it's, it's, did I take better notes in this? I don't know where I wrote my notes at, but I think they're gonna, it's, it's gonna not really, there's, there's not gonna be any taxes collected on that until October.
So.
And, and then you have to budget. That's, I don't even think if the money starts to generate itself, we're not gonna even start spending it or plan on spending it till, till December, Jan, I'm sorry, January of twenty five, right?
There will be nothing in this fiscal year. It will be next fiscal year. So, um, it will be December of twenty four.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, okay, so yeah.
That's it, but if that proposition doesn't pass.
Right, and then.
And we'll know that in November.
That's right. Right.
The state pub, this, it's coming in, so eyes on them. Um, and then she did give a presentation on our, um, our revenue trends, on the tax generation, the revenue of that, and then investment opportunities, which was interesting, but we're gonna have some new opportunities coming our way for investment and, and how we want to strategize our portfolio. We moved the money to Bank of Stockton last year and those in, entry level rates were real attractive. Money market and, and CDs, right? And so now it's coming up on one year and those are probably gonna change and I, I don't know what they're gonna be, but they'll, they're likely to not be as attractive. So we might have to do some different investments though. And that's coming, sure, that's coming.
Yeah, so we just had a meeting, um, and so we're, uh, we're gonna have Michelle reach out just to kind of
See what's on there.
See what else is on.
Do like a R S P kind of thing.
I am kind of like.
Like a.
Request for qualification information. Yeah. Um, and so it's, it's really, you know.
And then she's also gonna reach out locally to the local branch, to branches, because we want that local aspect too, so.
Good. But, um, investments are all really dependent on state law. So we, we're, we can't do anything wild and crazy.
Come on, I want twenty-three percent return. And then you could lose it all the next day.
But then I say, you know, and, and then I appreciated sitting in as a member of the public.
Who did not break Eddie Brown, because he did.
That, um, you know, she budgets conservatively.
Yeah.
It's like school districts that try to pad their budgets by overestimating their ADA. I'd much rather see her continue budgeting conservatively and be enthusiastically, uh, surprised.
Yeah, and I'll say, I was blown away. Our sales tax has increased.
Yes.
And we're, we're kind of asking like, where's it coming from? Why, why? Because.
Did she send you the update on, cause after we left here, we went back and she pulled, it's Calaveras lumber.
Nice. Well, and I think I said, I mean, everything's more expensive, but one could be increasing that much. And, and nobody's running around, you know, like they've won the Lotto in this city. Everyone's kind of saying that times are hard and things are more expensive. Restaurants are more expensive, everything. So it's gotta be, um, your, your building materials and such. Good.
You know, they, they also discussed at the committee level about developing a portfolio.
Yep.
And then Stockton savings might be able to do that. And then we'll look at, you know, triple A bond, you know,
Yep.
insured and, and look at, you know, a reasonable group.
Yeah, so that's, that's what we talked about, um, with, uh, Bank of Stockton and Michelle will also be looking at that with other options. Um, we, we've done a great job at earning revenue. So that was the first phase. So phase two is growing our portfolio. So growing our assets, um, which I love the revenue.
Right.
But our portfolio doesn't get any better. So, um, that, that will be the next step.
Good.
And then the other, um, meeting that I attended was U W P A on Tuesday the twenty-sixth. Um, we did have closed session. Uh, we had two items on closed session. One was potential litigation. And then the other was the employee evaluation for Joel Metzger. Um, the items on the regular agenda, we, um, as of right now, we're, you know, everything's determined off of water year and how good the water, uh, is out there and in the, in the Stan's, Stan's? Yeah. Um, right now we're tracking to be on a water year one, which will, it'll all determine on me first. And so that's great. That's good for budget. That's good for everything. Um, there was a request on the agenda for an irrigation applicant to receive more water for irrigating purposes. And so that was awarded. Um, we established a petty cash policy, cause we never had one, just for a couple hundred dollars of petty cash to be, uh, in the office at any time. And we did, uh, authorize a support letter for S B one O eight-eight, which is the Senator Alvarado Gill, um, man, uh, support. Um, we updated our irrigation water contractor policy. So that's the, the policy where people apply for the water. And our updates were to, um, were to increase it three percent moving forward. Um, administer, uh, an administration fee that we've never had before. It's thirty-four dollars. So just to get things started and it's an annual fee. And then we've never had a late fee before. So we did establish a late fee. There's been a few, a few late payers. And then we had a FERC update. The, um, window of opportunity for the stakeholders to respond closed. And so, uh, we did it, we did a, a, update on the response letters that we got from, there was about, there was more than twenty letters of support. Um, there was one objection and, and we've, we've addressed that objection letter. We kind of expected that. But our next steps are to gather all of those, meet with our consultant, Stan Tech, and then, um, plan the next steps. That's probably when Joel's gonna come do a full presentation here, uh, in a month or so. Um, we are expecting to have to do environmental and water flow studies, which we kind of already expected anyways, to have to do that for the, for the, uh, FERC exemption. Um, and then the costs that, for those studies, we already had earmarked to come out of the reserve. We had a, we had a million dollars, actually, yeah, a little over a million dollars that was in the FERC reserve for these be, for these, uh, environment, um, studies. Either of those studies will also need to be done if we don't do the exemption and if we do the relicensing. So we're still kind of operating neutral, uh, if we decide not to exempt. Um, and like I said, we're meeting with Stan Tech to gather all this information. There's still, there was still some support letters coming in, uh, that Caroline had, had gotten at Washington D.C. So those, we're allowing those to come in. They asked for a week and I think, like a, like a week's grace for them. I think that's probably still coming in.
So was that negative letter that had to do with fish and wildlife and the water?
It did. It was a sports fishing.
Sports fishing one.
Yeah. And it, yeah, it was, it was kind of expected, cause I think that's what they, that, that organization does. Um, they thought it, they thought we shouldn't be a candidate for, um, a, a conduit exemption. We should be a candidate for another type of exemption or another type of license. And we had the studies done three years ago to even find our pathway. And we knew we wouldn't qualify for those, for whatever reason, the hyperpower this and then this and that. So we're very confident in our choice for the conduit exemption. Um, but his wording was, we should go in a different direction. Um, and I think that was mainly with his, he, he, uh, thought that we should be regulated federally and, and not that the state D S O D wouldn't be enough regulation that he would want seen for the, the fish. And that was the only one. Um, and there was a, he had a third objection and I don't remember, I can't, I can't remember in my brain what it was, but Joel had met with him the week before he wrote his letter. And he, uh, pacified that, that third, that third concern. I can't, do you know?
I don't.
It was a third concern.
Yeah. Oh, and then, um, uh, you, you, so Jessica and myself are meeting with, uh, Joel and Utica. They're, um, consulting to go over the financial analysis, um, prior to you guys.
Budget meeting?
Yeah.
Good.
Okay. That's on the twelve. We're meeting on the twelve.
I got more.
Ooh, we got.
I'm gonna throw it here for one second. So, um, I just want to give like a big financial thanks to like Scott and Chris and Rose and Rebecca and Michelle. And, you know, council and staff all together for, you know, putting us in a really great financial spot at the moment. So just kudos to everybody.
Absolutely. I feel like it's the most transparent we've ever been with our finances, even though there's always gonna be learning curves and there's always things that's like, we forget or you weren't aware of or whatever, but.
Well, you guys approved it too, to move where we needed to move it to. So.
So.
Yeah, but we forget.
Yeah.
No, absolutely. I agree with that one. Thank you.
All right. So I'm up next. My calendar. Yep. Calendar's up there for you. Uh, what I need from you is I need dates for that handbook. We need to wrap it down. Uh, like, put it on the calendar. We're gonna get it done.
Right. What's the whole, do we have, we don't have enough open dates.
No, I haven't been able to, like, it's hurting fast right now. So, oh, look, I've done throughout dates.
What do we got?
All of you could make it except for one. And then that seemed to be issue on each one. So it's no major, no, no one hundred percent.
Yeah.
So the fifteenth, sixteenth, seventeenth and morning of the eighteenth, I am gone to an eight-one-one underground dig safe alert for Common Ground Alliance in Colorado.
Wow.
Yeah. So.
That week is out.
That, I, I leave on Sunday and I get back Thursday morning early. Um.
What other dates has Doug thrown at you, Rose?
He said, no, you guys pick.
Oh, he wants.
He's throwing dates out and none of them work. Yeah.
So past that, I don't know the whole heck of a lot I got in the evenings, um, but I can't.
And obviously this is gonna be a special meeting. So.
And it was, was it gonna be evening or was it gonna be?
Or in the morning or whatever.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think, I think I committed to pretty much all the dates. So I think that, I think, and I think Mike, you're pretty flexible with your schedule. No, no pun intended.
Can we, like the twenty-third?
I'd say let's do the twenty-fourth, but I don't care. Twenty-third, twenty-fourth.
You want, okay, no, let's just, you want evening or date? Um, they can't this evening because twenty-third.
Twenty-third is.
No, Utica got relooked. I'm sorry. I need to report on that. Utica has been, um, moved from the twenty-third to the thirtieth.
Oh, okay.
So we don't have the Utica on the twenty-third.
Okay, well then.
You wanna start like at three o'clock now? What, what works for you guys on the twenty-third?
I don't know.
I would say we start at like one.
I'm open. I have nothing on there.
Let's lunch, you know, sit down, cause this is.
Fine, lunch and we move on. Lunch and handbook. Deal. You want to put it in here?
What if, wanted, you can't make it. Are you fine as long as you're on your computer?
I think, um.
That's been the problem.
I'm good with it. I'm good with it. I mean, we're giving over twenty days heads up. So.
We didn't, this wasn't one of the dates that we tried to broadcast and clear.
No.
So we don't know if someone's gonna be out of town or working or vacationing or whatever.
I say we go for it. Cause it's, it's like, it's like a family reunion. You can't make it happen for everybody. You know what I mean? You just gotta pick a date.
So then, would there be the option of them zooming in? We could agendize it as such, Tom? It's a special meeting.
Uh-huh.
You have. If you.
If they post it?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Just the same general rules. If they tell me where they're at, they've gotta post it where they're at, all that stuff. So, okay.
Comment.
Yeah.
Yeah. So there's our, I mean, there's our, um, gratitude is if you can't make it on the twenty-third at one o'clock, then you can zoom in.
You can at least zoom in. Okay.
One o'clock, so one to five, yeah?
Yeah.
Or one o'clock.
One, whatever.
Please.
And my question is too, on the sixteen, I could post where I'm at, whatever hotel, if you need me to. I didn't know if anybody else was already gone.
I haven't heard that anybody's gonna be.
I mean, if I'm the only one gone, I.
So we do have closed session on the sixteen.
Right. All right.
So we're starting at what time?
Five.
That's fine.
Okay.
I can make it. Can I, can you post it that way or not?
Yeah, we can do that.
Well, the sixteen, we're gonna start at five.
I'll find the address.
We're starting at five.
Tell me what information you need and I can.
So even though you're gonna be at this, uh.
Well, it stops at five and it's actually what? Colorado's an hour or two hours ahead?
It's two or three.
One hour.
I don't remember.
I know. So one hour? Okay. So I mean, so it'd be six o'clock there and if I gotta skip out on, I don't imagine the conference is going until six o'clock.
Okay.
Let me, I will find out a schedule too, but we will, Rose, me and you will be in contact.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so what do we have left here?
Future agenda.
Future agenda items.
Um, okay, so, uh, we've been talking internally and we keep running up against, and Jen, you and I have talked about this in the past too. Uh, we don't have an on-call list. So we want to, I'm gonna bring forward, uh, basically a request to issue an R F Q for various on-call services. So engineering contractors, underground inspectors, architects, surveyors. Um, we just keep, like, when we have bottlenecks, that seems to be what it is.
Yeah.
Um, also, we have identified, um, you know, some of the issues in our parking lots is like poor lighting. So sleep circles are a perfect example of that. It's got old lighting. Seven of the nine are working, but if they're old, so they're like yellowed and barely put off any light. So we can replace the lighting for all of them, which then one of the houses is probably gonna complain that it's too bright back there. But, um, it makes it more appealable for people to park up there and, and right now people don't wanna park up back.
Right.
So we're gonna bring that forward, um, for discussion and approval at the next meeting. Um, I think. So I'm not, uh, oh, not, already let, uh, no. Uh, so now I'm on Isabel too, Caroline.
Okay. I have a request for a, a future agenda item. It doesn't have to be this meeting, but I would say soon, just based on the time of year.
Oh, sorry, one more item.
Go ahead. Go ahead. What do you got?
The, uh, Calaveras Fire Services JPA enrollment.
Enrollment.
That's, yeah, the other one. That's the next meeting. I'll do that.
Cause they will admit by then. The JPA will admit. Oh, but they need us to meet first. Sorry, you're right.
We will have legal review, the documents. So.
To a dog.
Yes.
I was thinking, just because of the time of year that it is, usually we start talking about weed abatement and fire abatement and all that. And we really haven't had to do that because we have all the policies and procedures in place, which we didn't before. But would it be appropriate, or I shouldn't ask, I would love to see a schedule of what, what we're going to be doing with regard to our, uh, our cleanup, our roads, not, you know, what, what's our schedule? What are, when are we gonna start the crack sealing? When are we going to do the weed, uh, weed eating? Or when are we gonna do things so that I can point to it and see what, what the road crew guys are gonna be up to? So I don't know if that would be a full presentation or just a schedule or kind of like what we just went through with building and planning. I just feel like it's a, it's the time of year to see what's going on.
That's fine.
I'd like to see it, but.
And I'll piggyback on that. We're short staff. We're trying to do 8, 9, 1 things. If it's easier to, I'm just gonna throw out, Joe Low Weed Eating, Joe Low Weed Eating Service at $20 an hour, to hire him and contract?
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying? There are things that we're requiring everybody else to do and we need to do them too. So if we have, if we run up against the wall.
Yep.
I'm for going out and giving a quote from an 18, or whatever, you know, moving high landscape thing or whatever.
So we've, we've already, Chris is already reaching out to the San Juan King Off of Education Corps. And he's already, um, reaching out to the fire camp, um, to see if we can get Corps, um, through them.
Some help.
Just in terms of vegetation management.
Perfect.
And, um, and we lost our extra hire in public work because we're still down that, that our permanent position in there. So, um, and then we've got another one that's out.
They're, they're down to four people right now.
Yeah.
Right.
And I'm not saying that the schedule's gonna be aggressive or great because of those reasons, but I'd still like to just see what's our plan at the time. What, what are we hoping? And I know that there's gonna be water breaks and things that are gonna push it up, but at least so we could at least see what we would like to try to accomplish.
Yeah.
Any other future, future agenda items from you guys? Good, good? All right, looking for adjournment. We gotta motion.
She may.
Second. She may.
Broly.
I can go to the second and a vote.
No, I, I.
I.
Thank you.
Thank you.